Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the 2018 Special Town Meeting and Annual Town Meeting. The town clerk informs me that we do have a forum, so if you could come in, please take a seat. That would help. A quorum being present, this special town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn so that we may open the annual town meeting. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to adjourn the special town meeting. All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? That's a vote. A quorum being present, this annual town meeting shall now come to order. We have a return of the warrant by Constable Adam Loomis. As required by Massachusetts law, the Chief of the Fire Department, Scott Duffy, asked that I point out the exits from the auditorium in case of an emergency, and it's the two you might have entered in the back, one to my left and one to my right. I will now call on our new veterans agent, Vincent Fontaine, to lead us in a salute to the flag. Vin, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Please stay standing. Vin, thank you very much. Welcome to Rockland. I know you've been here since last summer, but we're a pleasure to have you. Now, I'd like to ask Reverend Jay Witham of the First Baptist Church in Rockland to come forward and give the invocation, and then please remain standing while I read the list of deceased town employees and officials. Reverend?
Thank you. Look, bow our heads. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight in this public forum. Thank you that we live in a country where we have the freedom to do so, the freedom to voice our opinions in a public forum. We thank you, Lord, for the occasion that brings us together. We thank you for our town leaders and our civil government. We thank you, Lord, for those who have served so well in this community. And now, as we get underway with this town meeting, we ask, Lord, for your blessing upon all who participate. We ask that you would give us unity, even in disagreement, that we might be able to have a oneness of spirit and of mind, and we ask, Lord, that you would bless us with that tonight, and we ask it in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Reverend, thank you very much for coming tonight. Now, the deceased people who have served the town, Charles Kimball, Jr., who was on many committees, held many volunteer positions for many, many years, Michael Downing, James Monahan, Patricia Chaponis, Irene Boudreau, Mary Ellen Scanlon, Ann Phelps, whose husband, Richard, is currently a member of our school committee, Francis Sylvia, Christopher Willett, Mike McDonald, Lisa Wright Murphy, Robert Paulding, and his daughter is currently our assistant principal at Rockland High School, Mary Pickett, Carolyn Gunderway, Constance Keys, Paul Ryan, Elizabeth Ann Kimball, Patricia A. Phillips, Joseph Bouchard, and lastly, Bob Biggins. Although Bob was never elected or appointed to a political position in Rockland, he was very visible and a contributor in many ways to the town. He was especially supportive of the school department, the fire and police departments, and I'm sure others. He loved being part of the holiday stroll each November. Bob left his mark on Rockland and gave us his son, Dan, who was currently the chairman of our school committee. We express our sorrow to the families of all the former employees and volunteers who have served the town of Rockland and to the families of all the deceased residents who have passed since last year's town meeting. The special town meeting and the annual town meeting are being videotaped by WRPS. I would ask that any and all non-registered voters must sit in the front rows in the section to my left. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and I thank you for taking time out from your busy schedule. As you know, it's necessary once a year to complete the town business so that the town can continue to operate in the next fiscal year. As you know, Article 29 of the 2013 Annual Town Meeting reduced the quorum to open a town meeting to 150 registered voters, with only 50 registered voters need to be present at this session or any adjourned session, which is approved by the Attorney General on July 26, 2013. If you wish to speak on an article tonight, please raise your hand. When I recognize you, please come to one of the microphones down front and state your name and address before speaking. Each speaker will be allowed up to five minutes when speaking on a budget item or article which is being acted upon. No speaker who has previously spoken on the same budget item or article will be recognized until all others who wish to speak have had their opportunity. Now, I'd like to introduce the people on the stage. To my immediate left, the town clerk, Donna Shortall, the town accountant, Eric Hart, the town administrator, Alan Chalka, town council, John Clifford, and town land use council attorney, Christopher Kenny. Also in the audience, I think, is State Senator John Keenan, and I don't know if I haven't seen him tonight because Noel has a town meeting, State Representative Dave DeCoste. Now, I'd like to enlist the newly-elected officials who were elected or re-elected on April 14, 2018. If you could, they could please stand and hold your applause till I name them all. Selectman Michael P. Mullen, Jr., Town Clerk, Donna M. Shortall, Town Treasurer, John J. Ella, Jr., Town Collector, Judith A. Hartigan, Board of Assessors, Charles E. Wenner, Jr., and Diane Marlinow, Health Board Member, Stephen B. Nelson, Housing Authority, John T. Davis, Library Trustees, Patricia M. Foley and Kathleen M. Looney, Park Commissioner, Joseph M. Reese, Planning Board Member, Charles O. Williams III, School Committee, Jill Maroni and Thomas P. Mills, Saw Commissioner, Walter Simmons, and Water Commissioner, June Pat Donnelly. Good luck. Now, I'd like to introduce the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee. First, the Chairman, Bill Allen, the Secretary, Julia Schaefer, Richard Dunham, Robert McDonald, Sheila Mulcahy, Jamie Potter, Richard Penny, William Principi, I think Bill's in Florida, smart man, Mark Pulcifer, John Pumphrey, William Stewart, Joseph Gambon, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee, and Ken Toachi, who also serves on the Capital Planning Committee. Also on the Capital Planning Committee, Lauren Hanson, Richard Harris, Brian Hughes, Douglas Wallow, and currently Selectman Larry Ryan. Thank you very much. Just to point out, the citizens of Rockland should be proud of all the hard work this committee, the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee do to prepare the fiscal budget prior to town meeting, so that you've got the correct information and concise information as we progress through town meeting. The members of the Capital Planning Committee review articles for capital expenditures over $50,000 and have a useful life of at least five years with inclusion in a five-year capital improvement plan. Having this plan continues to help pave the way to improve the financial rating and bonding status for the town of Rockland. And I found out today from Alan Chalka, I want to make sure I get this right, that Rockland's bond rating is now one step below the top step. Is that true, Alan? Which is a huge improvement if we have to borrow money. The Finance Committee, along with the town accountant, Eric Hart, the town administrator, Alan Chalka, and all the department heads, work on a daily and weekly basis for the best interest for the entire town. I would like now, tell us to come forward, Mary Ryan, Nancy Crowley, and Liza Landy. And I know Liza might be out in the hallway. If she could come in. Oh, here she comes. Now, I would call on Chairman Bill Allen, the Finance Committee Chairman, to say a few words about this year's budget.
There's not much to say. This is my last meeting as Chairman of the Finance Committee. I just want to thank all the members that I've worked with this year to create this budget for the townspeople of Rockland. We've taken the time, met with every department, and all the departments, all the department heads have been extremely helpful in putting this budget together. There have been a number of instances where departments had to withdraw articles from the warrant so we could put forth a budget that we think will move the town of Rockland forward and keep going in the correct direction. So I want to thank all the department heads that have worked with us this year. It's really you that have put the town of Rockland in this position that we're in today. This year's budget was a little bit tighter than usual, and we did have to make a little bit more decisions than we have over the last five years. However, I think we have a working budget here and one that is fiscally responsible given our situation, and hopefully we continue this for the years to come. Other than that, I'd like to open town meeting.
Thank you. And Bill, thank you for the past 10 years being on the Finance Committee. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting for the purpose of returning to the special town meeting. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. A quorum is present. I will now call on the special town meeting to order. Mr. Allen?
I'd like to make a motion that the first action on each article will be on the Finance Committee recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote.
I'd like to make a motion to take all articles in the order in which they are printed.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Okay, let's get started. We're on page six of the booklet you might have received when you came in to door tonight, Article Number One. Will the town vote to transfer from the undesignedated fund balance a sum of money to be transferred to the stabilization fund or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the Finance Committee has set a policy to reach the Department of Revenue's minimum recommended level of 5% of the town's tax levy. The levy for 2018 is $36,86,644, calculates out to a funding level of $1,804,332. The current balance is $1,619,685. They recommend taking $80,000 from undesignedated fund balance. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article Two. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $125,000 for the raising of the Lincoln School or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, public safety issue, raising of the building required to move forward with land use. The Finance Committee recommends funding $76,000 from undesignedated fund balance and $49,000 from group insurance. All those in favor of recommending Article Two signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? Let's try this one more time. All those in favor of adopting Article Two as presented by the Finance Committee signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? Chair is in doubt.
Can I say something?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Just turn around and face the people.
Okay. I'd rather face them. They're going to make the decision. Yeah, they are. My name is Mike Laffiato. I've lived in this town since 1979, raised my kids here. I consider this article is a forewarning for a huge increase to our property taxes, and I think it's unwarranted. I think it's a want, not a need. I think refurbishing of the fire department building uptown would be a heck of a lot less than a six or a $10 million new facility. It would ruin our neighborhood. Our housing values will be plummeting. No one will want to move in, the noise, the lights, and all of that stuff. I think the estimate of $125,000 just to raise this building, it's a huge building, it's got a ton of asbestos in it, I think the EPA would have to be involved, as well as OSHA, on an ongoing basis throughout that project. It's going to cause a hazardous condition in the neighborhood, and I'd really appreciate it if you people will vote this down, and let's look for an alternate means to get that building uptown refurbished. It would cost a hell of a lot less money. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? No, no. Anyone else want to speak? Gentlemen in the back.
My name is Jim Paul. I live at 162 Webster Street, but I'm also the Chairman of the Rockland Historical Commission, and we are definitely opposed to the raising of the Lincoln School. It is one of our few remaining significant buildings in town. The fact that it's been listed as a public safety hazard, I'm a little confused by that because it was used recently by the school administration offices while the new schools were being built. It's still being used currently as training facilities for the fire and police departments, and I believe it's a good candidate for repurposing, whether it's for housing, condominiums, office space, extra town hall space, extra municipal space. I also think it's not a great location for a fire station. I just hate to see the town lose one of its few remaining historical buildings, and it's got a good history, it's a solid building. I don't see that it's falling down. If one of the issues is asbestos, that needs to be dealt with, whether it's being torn down or being repurposed, so that's kind of a mute point. It has to be addressed at that point. So I hope you, hopefully, that you folks will vote this down. I'm sure that there's other things we can do, regardless if it's for a fire station or not. I'd love to see, along with the rest of the commission and a few other folks, we'd like to see this building try to be saved, repurposed, even if it's sold by the town to raise money to purchase another piece of land. But I think it's a building that is important to the town. We've got very few remaining. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Deirdre Hall, I'm a member of the Board of Selectmen. I want to speak on the facts and circumstances and the conditions that are supporting the board's recommendation to take the building down. Specifically, the site's been inspected by our fire chief and our building inspector. And although the building appears to be structurally sound, there's an area above the garage and other rooms that are affected due to a roof leak. There's some major water damage that has weakened that area of the structure. Additionally, as said earlier, the building contains hazardous material, both lead paint and asbestos, that was used when it was constructed. Right now, those are intact, but we risk, if we keep it up, of those coming airborne. There's mold throughout the entire building, and it's a safety threat currently to neighboring structures. Right now, it is a risk for squatters. It's not well secured. Some of the windows and doors don't lock, some of the windows and doors are boarded up. So not only is it a risk for squatters to enter, but it's a risk for squatters to be unable to exit should there be an emergency like a fire. Also, if there had been a fire, the sprinklers will be ineffective. They're not currently functioning well. It's also an old wooden building with lots of combustible debris, which makes it a pretty heavy fire risk. If there was a fire, it would go up pretty quickly and pretty intensely, and because a lot of the systems don't work, the time to respond from the fire department would not be as quick. Additionally, you know, we've had other fires in town, and so we're mindful of that, and we're mindful of the fact that because this building has hazardous materials, should there be a fire, those hazardous materials would then contaminate the ground and the soil, which would then cost a lot more money to repair and remediate the site. The cost of repairs, the cost benefit there, it's just not there versus the cost of demolition. The cost to bring this building up to code exceeds the cost of the demolition, and that doesn't even include the cost to continue to maintain the building. Additionally, the town right now has no future plans for the building. There is no current plan for it in place. And finally, right now, we're insuring this building at a cost of $20,000 to $25,000 a year, and we're not using it. It costs more to insure right now because we're not using it. So it's, what we need to do is the public, I mean, we all walk around town, drive around town, and see some of the abandoned and derelict buildings that private landowners have here, and I know we've all said to ourselves, like, I wish someone would do something with that. But we need to do that with our own stuff. We need to lead by example. We need to make sure that we're taking care of our things so that we can make a good example for other private landowners in the area to take care of their property as well. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Gentlemen to the left.
Hi, my name is Todd Carson. I'm in a buttered-up property. I live at 47 Franklin Ave., and I'm very concerned with the fact that this is being taken down or being proposed to take down without the consultation of the Historical Commission and Open Space, especially in light of the fact that just a couple of years ago, the town voted to accept the Community Preservation Act, which would be ideal to seek the funds to do all the things that you just mentioned, repairing the building, making it safe. You know, the idea of squatters being in the building, it's how much does it take to actually secure a building to keep people out? And the town needs to find a use for it. I've discovered over the last few days, speaking with some of the selectmen and a couple of other people in town, that they've been proposing to put a fire station on the site. And I was very disconcerted that, when I looked online initially to find the minutes for all those meetings, they were not posted online. I then went to the town clerk's office to find that they have been meeting for two years and have not made any minutes available at the town clerk's office. So this plan to move forward with a new fire station location and this idea that this building needs to be demolished as a reason of public safety, just, it doesn't all align. I believe it's an effort to move the building off of the site and move forward with the fire station, and I don't want that in my neighborhood, and I don't think any of you would want it in your backyard either. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Duffy. I'm your fire chief of your Rockland Fire Department. So yes, I am the Chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee. Have we posted minutes? No. Doesn't occur on my part, and I accept full responsibilities for it. But by no means is it, was it a ploy to hide anything, as Mr. Carson has pointed out or has tried to accuse. The Lincoln School property is a primary site and a candidate site for a new fire station in town. Current fire station, built 1938, 1978 edition, has grown, we have outgrown that site. And anybody, anybody in the town, in the audience, that's not in the audience, is more than welcome to come up to the fire station for a tour. And you can see the conditions that we work out of and the tight spaces that we currently are accustomed to, unfortunately. The site at the Lincoln School, while I was asked to evaluate it, yes, it is a structurally sound site, but I would like to know what the purpose of that site is right now. Currently, I can think of four or five vacant abandoned buildings within the town of Rockland that pose a risk to fire to the neighborhoods around it. In March of last year, we had a seven alarm fire that threatened over 10 houses. Thanks to your Rockland Fire Department, those houses were saved, with no damage to any residences, except for some scorching and melting of siding. Now, here is another building that we have in town that has been sitting vacant for a couple of years. Yes, it was used as the offices for the schools, and yes, the police and fire departments do use it for training, because there is no better purpose for it now. The amount of money that the town would need to put into this site would be extraordinary to get it back to where that building would need to be for any purposes. The site initially was...
...204 Moncrey Road.
Sorry. The site was originally trying to be sold by the school department. The developers for that were looking for it to put up a 40B housing unit. So you can ask yourselves, what do you want on that site? Just a question to think about when you go through tonight's vote. What I will say is, is that the Fire Station Building Committee has not met, has not voted on any sites, and we do meet this Thursday on the 10th. So please, if we meet at the lower meeting room in Town Hall, you're more than welcome to come and sit in and listen. This article is to remove the existing building, the existing structure, what I consider a fire threat and a danger to the community and to the residents, Howard Street and on Franklin Ave. It has nothing to do with the Fire Station Building Committee or a potential site for the fire department.
Gentlemen with the red shirt, come down front.
Peter Dow, 31 Union Street in Rockland, also a member, along with Jim Paul, the Historic Commission. I just want to echo a couple of the previous comments by Todd and Jim about the importance of this site, and I understand the concern of the fire chief and some other people who spoke tonight. But I just want to express that we haven't been consulted at all on this, and I think if this is such an important site, we consider it something that needs to be discussed with the Historic Commission, the Open Space Commission, and not something that is done without a wider knowledge of the appropriate bodies in the town. There's also a significant cost involved to take the building down, we understand that. But there's also alternatives to just demolishing it without any recovery of the important historic artifacts in it, as well as the structure itself. So my concern is not just for the neighborhoods around it, but from the Historic Commission's perspective, that more work needs to be done on this to research it and come to a wider agreement on how that property should be used. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. My name is Mike Mullen. I'm, excuse me, a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I just want to point out one thing. We're talking about, you know, our so-called historic buildings, and, you know, having, I've been born and raised in Rockland, you know, I know there's a tendency here to think of buildings that we might have, many of us have gone to school in, all as historic buildings. And, you know, like, we look at what we're trying to do in Rockland Center, in terms of, you know, the whole revitalization effort there, and one of the things we're trying to balance is the whole question, what's really historic and what isn't historic, and what has been in the town for, oh, you know, maybe 100 years, is an old building, but what, if anything, is the historical significance of it? You know, like, and we can go down Union Street, we can go down the side streets, down Park Street, down Church Street, and, you know, the reality is, to many of us who have been born and raised in this town, there are many buildings here that are part of our memories that we might call historic, but some buildings are historic and others aren't historic. I mean, the thing, the fact of the matter is, we're at like a real balancing act in terms of where we're going as a town. We have many, many outdated capital facilities. We have more needs than we have even revenues and our funding available to us. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we can't, we literally... I mean, the fact of the matter is, we can't, we literally don't have the money to reinvest in every building. For the past few years up, I think it was two thousand fifteen, the fall of two thousand fifteen, the Board of Selectmen at that time went out and did really a, like, a capital needs analysis of what our buildings are and what they needed. And, oh, you know, so that report came back and said, "We need to really look at what we're doing at the fire station." That a building is outdated, it's unsafe for the personnel who works, who worked there, there are many health hazards. Then looked at the, then looked at the police department, and even though that's about twenty years old now, that has additional needs. Lastly, looked at the community center, the old McKinley School, which we all know is a gem. Like, if we want to say any building in town, you know, has really a lot of meaning and has a future life, in my opinion, like, it's the community center. And, you know, just where it's located, you know, the architecture and the outside, but it needs work, it needs a whole lot of work. And one of the things, one of the conversations that went into preparing for the town meeting, is actually to spend, I believe it was two-hundred-and-thirty dollars to do an assessment on how to plan for the future of the building. You know, as Mr. Allen mentioned, however, this is a very tight budget year, and we didn't even have the funding available to do that. So like, we have huge needs at the community center, you know, to the tune of at least ten million dollars needed in repairs, and at the same time, we can't talk about spending money that we don't have to reinvest in all these other buildings. If we were to do anything at the, like, at the Lincoln School site to make it any type of a public site, like a public building, like, the building doesn't even have an elevator. So like, imagine trying to retrofit a, like, a building that was built, I think, in eighteen ninety-something, like, and to reinvest in that building and to put an elevator there. That, that in and of itself is almost cost prohibitive. So like, we're trying to do all these things, really operating on a very limited budget, and, you know, like, we just, the balancing act in terms of really saving a site, preserving a site, and really, in my opinion, you know, taking out a hazard that exists in a neighborhood, you know, like, is what we're trying to do. I know there's another conversation, you know, like, about a potential fire station that would happen in the future, but this whole question is completely unrelated to that.
Mr. Mullin, you've got twenty more seconds.
That's all I have, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Any, Mrs. Parsons?
Mary Parsons, Union Street. I'm going to make this very quick, but Article fifteen and sixteen, a little further along, addresses the issue of money for the Historical Commission. It is CPA money, and I think you're putting the cart before the horse. I think you want to find out first what money, because you do have money, it's not a question of not having money, because we're appropriating that tonight through the CPA. So you can always call for a special town meeting later on, or put it on next year's town meeting to see if you want to take down the building, but I would ask you to pass over this question, and let's take a look at that building first.
Anyone, anyone else want to speak? I already, I saw the man with the blue shirt.
My name is Patrick O'Donnell. I've been a resident in Rockland for the past six years. I live directly opposite the building, the Lincoln School. It's one of the most beautiful buildings in town. The thought of even ripping it down is, doesn't make any sense. It's beautiful. There's a park right next to it, could make beautiful tennis courts. This is what this town needs, is needs to be uplifted. As far as the building being destroyed inside, from the outside, it looks perfectly fine for me. I would say any mold or asbestos, yes, I'm sure that is. I'm also a real estate guy, and I know mold is caused by water, so maybe all that training that the fire department was doing was caused by the hoses and basically to destroy the inside of the building. The second thing is saying the building to be knocked down to be a forty B. For those of you who don't know, a forty B is basically thirty percent of whatever units go up are turned into for low-income families, and there's nothing wrong with that. I've never heard of any forty B projects to be a bad thing. It's only a good thing for the town. The idea of a fire station in front of my six-year-old daughter's bedroom window going off morning, noon, and night, I don't think so. I don't think anybody around here in a quiet family neighborhood to put a fire station in needs their head examined. There are so many places in town this could be done. I don't know why they don't take care of the one they're in right now. And as far as all their buildings to be taken down, Park Street, Church Street, drive around, everybody knows the state this town is in. It needs to be cleaned up, and it also needs smart people to do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sir, thank you for the support of the Rockland Fire Department. What I will say is that building, the mold that is within that building is directly from roof leaks throughout. Be more than happy to take you through that tomorrow, sir.
I have a mo... Motion to move the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you've voted to move the question. We're going to try one more vote, and then we're going to count. All those in favor of adopting Article number two, as recommended by the Finance Committee, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted to pass the article over. Article number three. Will the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of forty-five thousand dollars for the raising of the Estes Auto building, including any related work to prepare the property for use or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency has given the ability to move forward with land use. The Finance Committee recommendation is to defer it to the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chalka.
This is just an attempt to have the money available. We do not know what the final outcome will be when we deal with mass development, whether we will be better off to take the land, depends on the level of hazardous waste. At the site, we have done some soil sampling, sampling. In the fall, it looked very promising that the contamination was not too great. We have to do one more round in the spring. There is the possibility that this, these funds will never be expended. If we go off for an RFP at some point, if the land is approved to be used, either commercially or residentially at some point, the town can then make a determination whether there's any value and no exposure or liability in taking the property so that we can once and for all clean up the Estes property. We are not sure at this point what the final recommendations will be for mass development. It may be to our advantage to remove the building and then look for RFPs for the property. It may be to our advantage to allow whoever bids on the property to take the property down. So this was an attempt to be prepared for what the final outcome that comes forward from the soil sampling and from mass development.
And for anybody that doesn't know, Estes Auto Supply is located, the old building, two-twenty-five West Water Street.
If the funds are not spent, it will return to the town as free cash next year.
At this point, I need a motion. I have a motion to accept and a second. All those in favor of adopting the article to transfer from undesignated fund balance forty-five thousand for the raising of Estes Auto Supply, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article four, will the town vote to take from available funds the sum of twenty-three thousand to fund the construction and improvements of a drainage catchment at the backside of Mon Creek Road or take any other action relative thereto? This emergency is this area is highly prone to flooding. Area presently is a trench and will be designed to hold and distribute water more evenly and provide easier access to maintain said catchment. The Finance Committee recommends approval of funding a hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-eight cents from undesignated fund balance and twenty-two thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and twelve cents from the host community fund. All those in favor of adopting Article four, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number five, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to transfer from available funds a sum of twenty thousand dollars for the design and engineering of the ADA compliant Americans with Disabilities Act compliant library rear entrance construction, including any related work to the property or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency timing of the grant requires moving on the design and engineering as soon as possible. Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article five, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number six, and I would ask, I would hope, I need a nine-tenths vote on this for this unpaid bill. I would like a unanimous. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds for an unpaid highway department bill from doughboy uniforms in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents or take any action relative thereto? The bills were not received in time for processing within the fiscal year provided service or goods. Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article six, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article number seven. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars to fund the payout of contractually obligated accumulated leave time or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency to buy out employees' accumulated leave time for contractual negotiation. The Finance Committee recommends funding seventy-four thousand from undesignated fund balance and fifty-one thousand from group insurance. All those in favor of adopting Article seven, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number eight, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from water fund balance the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars with a like amount from the town of Abington for the purpose of engineering the upgrades at the Myers Avenue Water Treatment Plant in Abington or take any other action relative thereto? The treatment plant needs major upgrades to increase the much-needed water production from this site. The Finance Committee recommends funding from the water fund balance. Capital Planning Committee recommends further capital plan. All those in favor of adopting Article eight, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article nine, will the vote, will the town vote to take from available funds the sum of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the service to produce the required other post-employment benefits report or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency report required for correct annual audit. Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article nine, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number ten, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of fifty-eight thousand for the purchase of nine new copiers to replace copiers and or take any other action relative thereto? Recurring issue on copiers purchased, used, requiring replacement. Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article ten, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article eleven, will the town vote to authorize the sewer commissioners to take from the sewer department unreserved fund balance the sum of forty-five thousand for the purpose of, for the purchase of a six-inch dry prime diesel pump to be used during high-flow events or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, this is for the replacement of a twenty-year-old pump used as part of a high-flow management plan that was rendered inoperable during March storm Quinn. Finance Committee recommends funding from sewer fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article eleven, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number twelve, will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of six hundred thousand dollars for reducing the snow and ice deficit or take any other action relative thereto? Obviously, I wasn't here, but you had a terrible march. Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twelve, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of twenty-five thousand for legal, to legal services or take any other action relative thereto? Unexpected legal action. Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article number thirteen, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article fourteen, will the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of four hundred thousand to purchase two-fifty-eight Union Street Lot thirty-nine dash three-oh-three, eighteen thousand six hundred and five square feet or take any other action relative thereto? As you know, that is the gas station, the former gas station next to Town Hall. The emergency has given the ability to move forward with land use as soon as possible. The Finance Committee recommends funding a hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars from undesignated fund balance, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand five hundred from the overlay surplus. The Capital Planning Committee recommends approval for their capital plan. All those in favor of adopting Article numbers fourteen, signify with a show of hands? Sure. Come right down, sir.
Good evening. I'm Brian McDonald, two Franklin Hunt Road. This is our taxpayers' money. It's four hundred thousand dollars to buy a piece of property, not to do anything with it, so we're going to be coming back next year to ask for more money. Rumor is they're looking to put a parking garage there. This area is nothing for a parking garage. The only things near it is that Tedeschi's, actually Seven-Eleven now, that has its own parking lot. There's a bank across the street that has its own parking lot. There's a bank on the other side that has its own parking lot. This area is just going to go to waste. We're going to end up spending a lot of money for a parking lot or a parking garage that isn't needed in that area. I'm a firm believer that we need parking uptown. That area isn't the area that needs parking. There's nothing around there that people are going to be walking to from there. Four hundred thousand dollars can go a long way. Next year, they'll be asking for more money to build the garage, so you're probably talking close to a million dollars from building the garage, four hundred thousand for the space itself. We heard from some of the selectmen today, the Finance Committee, that money is tight. We could use this for some rehab in some of the buildings. We could use this for a lot of stuff. You know, I'm sure the fire department needs new apparatus. I'm sure the seniors would like generators for their living spaces. Anything we could use this for, as opposed to a parking lot that's away from kind of downtown. The only thing it's near is the Town Hall, which has parking in the rear and street parking. For that reason, I request that everybody vote this down. Thank you.
Gentlemen over here to my left.
Donald Cahn, sixty-four Union Street. In nineteen ninety-nine, I chaired the long-range planning for this town, the master plan. That master plan is the master plan we have today, and the master plan recommended that the town acquire this property as a long-range project. This allows for expansion of the municipal finger, footprint here. It also gives parking that the school department currently is paying to park in, and it's also enables an aesthetic, new aesthetic for the downtown. I recommend that we pass this article. It makes good planning sense.
Mr. Kimball.
Good evening. Ed Kimble, eight Magnolia Drive, Rockland. Currently the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. As you all know, I've been on the board, this is my ninth year. Going back nine years ago, when I came to town meeting here, we were never in this position to actually go out and acquire a piece of property to actually make the town better. We were stuck with living with whatever was left around here. That piece of property had recently come up for sale, and it's, the sale price is something that's warranted where we actually took a look as the Board of Selectmen. As you know, there's been a new group going out, Reimagine Rockland, and that's for the downtown of Rockland. And as some of my other selectmen have said before me tonight, we need to lead by example. And by lead by example, we need to reinvest in the downtown as well. That's a piece of property that's on the corner. We could use it to expand part of Town Hall. We could use it to expand possibly a park. We could possibly utilize the building there. Honestly, we don't know what we're going to do with the building yet. There was a gentleman here tonight who spoke before me in this very spot, who said it was going to be for parking, who said we were going to build a parking garage. We have no idea what it's going to be, but we need people like you to get on some of these committees. these committees and spend the same time that we spend on a weekly basis coming up with ideas for the town instead of coming to this one meeting, which, believe me, I appreciate everybody coming to this one meeting to get the business of the town done. But it takes more than one night to keep this town going and moving in a good direction for everybody in town. Mr. Kahn had spoke. Myself and Donald had many differences over the years, but I can tell you this. We actually agree on this one particular issue. Okay? This is something that's going to benefit the town and the future of the town. And it's an opportunity that we have, and we only have those opportunities, and opportunities only knock once. So we need to be able to seize that moment, decide what we want to do. You're going to hear more later on tonight about CPA funds. You're going to hear about all sorts of things that we can do, and those are all going to be wonderful endeavors, but they're a little too late if we don't go through and purchase this property tonight. We need to make sure that this article passes tonight so then we could decide collectively what we want to do with this. And I'm sure people like Donald, people like Jim Paul, people like Dan Biggins and Michael Losland and yourself are all going to weigh in on what we want to do with this. And we're asking you to help us. We're asking you to come support, come join some committees. You heard tonight Mr. Allen's been on the committee 10 years. He's given 10 years of his time. We need somebody else to step up and help on the Finance Committee. We need other people like yourselves to get involved. There was a gentleman here tonight who spoke about the Lincoln School. He's lived across from from six years. Come join a committee. Come give us your input. We heard another gentleman the same way about the Lincoln School, not in my backyard. Well, whose backyard? It's all of our backyard. So we need, we need to decide what we want to do as a town, and this particular article is something that we can change the face of Rockland when you come into town. We can create this space for future businesses, a future open space for the people to enjoy downtown. We can possibly alleviate parking at some point. I'm not sure. I don't have all the answers. I need your help. And the first part of getting that help is I respectfully ask you to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adopting Article 14 as recommended by the Finance Committee signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted to approve the article. Article 15. Will the town vote to establish four Community Preservation Act special revenue fund as follows? CPA general receipt reserve for appropriation representing 65%. CPA open space receipt reserve for appropriation representing 10%. CPA community housing receipt reserve for appropriation representing 10%. CPA historical resources receipt reserve for appropriation representing 10%. CPA administration receipt reserve for appropriation representing 5% or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the town voted to establish the Community Preservation Fund for the purposes of improving the town's open space, historical resources, and community housing using a surcharge combined with state funding. This article establishes the mechanism to hold the funding for future town meeting purposes. The following article funds these mechanisms. Per the Department of Revenue, this is required to be moved to these reserves this year. The Finance Committee recommends as presented.
Mr. Moderator?
Mrs. Parsons.
I'd like to amend that.
Bring it down. Make use.
Mary Parsons, Union Street. And it's very simple. I just would like to amend the percentages, and I have it here.
You can read them.
Okay. I would like to amend Article number 15 to read. Will the town vote to establish four Community Preservation Act funds as follows? CPA general receipt reserve for appropriation representing 55%. CPA open space receipt reserve for appropriation representing 15%. CPA community housing receipt reserve for appropriation representing 10%. And CPA historical resources receipt reserve for appropriations representing 15%. And CPA administration receipt reserve for appropriation representing 5% or take any other action relative thereto.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Okay, Mrs. Parsons, you can explain why you want it.
I would like to just, it's, we passed the CPA for the purpose of, of open space acquiring it so that we didn't have to come to town meeting and say we don't have the money. You just heard earlier on Article 2 that people got up and said we don't have the money. Well, this is a way of having the money for the historical commission to try and save that building, which was the first high school, or later bring it to a town meeting to tear it down. Same thing for the housing and the administration is enough money for them to hire a recording secretary to take all their meeting minutes. And please, people, go to these meetings, go to the meetings that you can, but I would ask you to pass this at a 15% for open space and historical commission. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Moderator? If I could be heard. Mr. Counsel.
Thank you, John Clifford, Town Counsel. Last year, voters in Rockland approved the Community Preservation Act. You also set up a committee, the Community Preservation Committee, that will come back to this town meeting and make recommendations on projects that are brought forward to that committee. They'll review them in a similar manner as your capital budget committee does with their projects. The capital, the Community Preservation Act sets aside 10% minimums for open space, historical, and community housing. That just means 10% of the available funding has to be earmarked for those three purposes. Any actual expenditure has to come back to town meeting. I understand what Ms. Parsons' amendment seeks to do, but essentially by adopting this amendment, you are handcuffing future votes on what you spend the money on. So again, there are 10% minimums for community housing, for open space, and for historical. If you, as your town meeting decided some future vote, to spend more, higher percentages on historic or open space, you have the ability to do that, but I think adopting this really puts a handcuff on future votes of town meeting.
Mr. Moderator, would I amend that?
Deidra Hall. Go ahead.
Hi, Deidra Hall, 204 Stanpipe Drive, member of the Board of Selectmen. I just wanted to reiterate one fact that counsel raised. The 65% in this, that's identified in this article that's reserved for appropriation can be used for any of these. It can be used for open space, it can be used for recreation, it can be used for affordable housing. It can be used for any of those uses. So the, as counsel said, the minimum amount 10% is earmarked just for those individual uses, but the other 65% we're free to spend on any of them. So by setting them at the minimum and leaving the 65% at the maximum level it can be, we're giving the town the most flexibility to meet the needs of the town at that time. If we, right now, if the need is open space, we have the flexibility to meet the open space. 10 years from now, if the need is community housing, we have the flexibility to meet the community housing. So by set, keeping that unreserved balance as high as we can at 65%, we're only giving ourselves more options. So I would recommend that we pass this article as it is. Thank you.
The 10% is just a minimum. There's nothing in the Community Preservation Act that says that you can't raise it. Plus, we took in $421,003 overall, where I'm just asking you to increase to 15% for two items because the general receipt reserve for appropriation would be $231,552 in the next article, which you could, the committee could use for anything. I am just asking you to give 15% for the two most things that they say that we don't have money for at any other time. Thank you.
Any more discussion? We'll vote on the motion, the motion first. All those of, yeah, I'm sorry, not the motion, the amendment. We're going to vote on the amendment. All those in favor of adopting the amendment as described by Mrs. Parsons signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted down the amendment. All those of voting Article 15 in favor as recommended by the Finance Committee as presented signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 16. Will the town vote to reserve $421,003 Community Preservation Act special revenue funds as follows for fiscal year 19? That is not, that was, we were told that we had to add that into your booklet. And it describes the figures here. The Board of Selectmen, I'm sorry, the Finance Committee recommends funding from raise it appropriate. That is the correct way. I questioned that myself. That is what we have to do. All those in favor of adopting Article number 16 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 17. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $65,000 to fire substitute payroll or take any action relative thereto? Unexpected substitution of personnel. Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 17 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 18. And I, I really do have to read this. It's a little long, but I'll read it. Will the town vote to raise it appropriate $25,000 and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen to borrow up to and including $100,000 in anticipation for state reimbursement pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8C, or any other enabling authority for the purpose of making capital improvements, renovations, and upgrades to a certain parcel of town-owned park and/or recreation property, together with buildings and improvements thereon known as Hots of Park, consisting of 16.5 acres more or less, as shown on the Town of Rockland's Assessors Map as Parcel 3081 and Parcel 3083, for the purpose of restroom ADA compliance to support public active recreation and youth programs that operate at Hots of Park. As described above, Hots of Park shall henceforth be considered park and recreation land pursuant to the General Laws, Chapter 45, Section 3, and shall be managed and controlled by the Park Commissioners and the Youth Commission of the Town of Rockland, and further that the town administrator be authorized to file on behalf of the Town of Rockland any and all applications deemed necessary for grants and for all reimbursements from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts deemed necessary under the Urban Self-Help Act 301 CMR 5, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Park Land Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant Program, and any other, and any others in any way connected with the scope of this article, and further that the Town of Rockland Board of Selectmen, Park Commissioners, and Youth Commission be authorized to enter into the grant and other agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary on behalf of the Town of Rockland to effect said grants, and further that the Board of Selectmen, Park Commissioners, and Youth Commission be authorized, as they deem appropriate, to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments, including the conveyance of a perpetual conservation restrictions in accordance with the Mass. General Laws, Chapter 184, as required by Section 12A of Chapter 44B or Chapter 293, Section 10 of the Acts of 1998, as amended as may be necessary on behalf of the Town of Rockland to be eligible for any such grant funds and to effect said purchase to, or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends approval of this article as printed. I need a two-thirds vote. I'd like to have it unanimous. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article 18 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 19. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds a sum of $500,000 to Veterans Memorial Garage Facility or take any other action relative thereto? The emergency, the bids came in higher than expected. The Capital Planning Committee has approved this, has recommended this. The Finance Committee recommends funding $100,000 from undesignated fund balance, $50,000 from overlay surplus, and $350,000 from group insurance. Any discussion?
Brian McDonald from Franklin Hunt Road again. It's more of a question than anything, and forgive my ignorance, I didn't do my homework before I came in. But last year, we voted for 1.956 million for repairing the Memorial Park Stadium and constructing the Park Department facility. So is this an additional 500,000 for it?
Yes, that's correct.
So what happened to the 1.9 million from last year?
That's still waiting to be spent. The bids came in higher than expected.
Okay.
And they all came in about the same range, so putting it out to bid another time, I don't believe would make any difference except possibly be inflated over the time.
Like I said, I didn't do my homework. Unfortunately, that's why I asked the question. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article number 19 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number 20. Will the town vote to transfer from available funds to sum of $150,000 to be used in combination with grant money if available for capital projects and repairs or take any other action relative thereto? The town has various project opportunities and needs throughout the year, often with matching grant funds that come up without notice. The Finance Committee recommends taking the funding from undesignated fund balance. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article 20 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted to approve the article. I would now entertain a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Do I have a second? All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. A quorum being present, I will now call the special town meeting, I mean, I'm sorry, the annual town meeting to order. Mr. Allen.
I make a motion that the first action on each budget and each article will be on the Finance Committee recommendation.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
I make a motion to take all articles in order in which they are printed.
Motion and a second to take all articles in order. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote.
And I make a motion to reconvene this meeting on Tuesday, May 8, 2018, at 7:30 in this same auditorium if needed.
All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number one. I'm sorry. It's still Article number one. That was the election which we elected our officials on April 14. Article two. Will the town vote to fix the salaries and compensation of all elective offices in the town in the amounts indicated in the department budgets and make such salaries and compensation effective July 1, 2018, in accordance with the provisions of the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, and to raise and appropriate such sums of money for the ensuing year, and that all sums be appropriated for the specific purpose designated, and that the same be expended on, for such boards and commissions of the town as voted or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends approval as presented. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article number three is the budget, and you have an addendum that you should have received when you came in the door tonight. Hopefully. No, no. All right. Here we go. Total Board of Selectmen raise and appropriate $433,200. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Total legal services, $100,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total building raise and appropriate, $79,300. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total town reports raise and appropriate, $10,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total utilities, general government raise and appropriate, the total is $465,700. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total traffic control raise and appropriate, $16,867. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Finance Committee raise and appropriate, $152,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Town accountant, total town accountant raise and appropriate, $210,932. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total assessors raise and appropriate, $181,310. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Town treasurer raise and appropriate, $229,544. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total information technologies raise and appropriate, $196,173. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total audit raise and appropriate, $49,000. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Town collector raise and appropriate, $174,236. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote.
$226.
I'm sorry. Town clerk, now I need two votes on this. The total town clerk budget is $172,265, but we transfer in $5,000 from dog receipts. All those in favor of transferring $5,000 from dog receipts? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total town clerk raise and appropriate, $167,265. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total town meetings and elections raise and appropriate, $33,690. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total registrar voters raise and appropriate, $9,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Conservation Commission raise and appropriate, $500. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Planning Board raise and appropriate, $5,225. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total zoning raise and appropriate, $5,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Police Department, we're going to have two votes on this. The total police department budget is $3,729,752. We're going to transfer in from the dog fund, $10,000. All those in favor of transferring in $10,000 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. The total police department raise and appropriate, $3,719,752. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Fire Department raise and appropriate. Total line, total is $3,428,547. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. We have a new department for dispatch. It's called Total Dispatch raise and appropriate, $350,000. All those in favor of $350 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Building Department. The total is $143,155. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Gas Inspector. The total is $6,195. All those in favor? All opposed? That's a vote. Plumbing Inspector raise and appropriate, $10,522. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Total weights and measures, $5,950. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Total Wire Inspector raise and appropriate, $29,160 for two inspectors. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Emergency Management raise and appropriate, $11,200. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Tree Department. Total raise and appropriate, $148,870. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. School Department. Total raise and appropriate, $26,717,183. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Highway Department raise and appropriate, $920,756. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. A new department, Stormwater. It's going to be raise and appropriate, $50,000. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Snow and Ice Control raise and appropriate, $150,000. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Total Waste Collection disposable raise and appropriate, $1,391,401. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Total Water Department, we'll have two votes on this also. Total Water Department budget is $3,78,904. From water unreserved fund balance, we're going to take $125,000. All those in favor of $125,000 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Water Department raise and appropriate from water receipts, $2,953,904. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Sewer Department. Total Sewer Department budget is $2,412,532. We're going to take $40,000 from sewer unreserved fund balance. All those in favor of taking that $40,000 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Sewer Department raise and appropriate from sewer receipts, $2,372,532. All those in favor? Opposed? That's a vote. Total Board of Health raise and appropriate, $133,684. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Visiting Nurses. Total Visiting Nurse raise and appropriate, $10,342. All those in favor of that amount? All those opposed? That's a vote. Council on Aging. The total is, raise and appropriate is $208,502. All those in favor of that signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Youth Commission raise and appropriate, $114,900. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Veteran Services raise and appropriate, $402,025. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Celebrations raise and appropriate, $3,150. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Library Department. Total Library raise and appropriate, $596,54. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Park Department. $333,298. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Historical Commission raise and appropriate, $400. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Interest in Maturing Debt is $4,649,598. Less, and this is what we're, the first vote we're going to take. Fund balance reserve for bond premiums, $130,527. All those in favor of the $135,27 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Interest in Maturing Debt raise and appropriate, $4,519,71. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Retirement Contributions raise and appropriate, $3,524,906. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Group Insurance. Other Employee Benefits. Active Employees, $6,164. I'm sorry, $6,164,224. We're going to vote on these separately. All those in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Other Post-Employment Benefits. Transfer to Trust Fund under, which is covered by Mass. General Law 32B, Section 20, $1,327,164. All in favor of that amount signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. So total group insurance raise and appropriate, $7,491,388. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Medicare Expense raise and appropriate, $456,750. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Total Liability Insurance raise and appropriate, $930,000. All those in favor? All those opposed? We're going to start with Article 4. Will the town vote to authorize and/or reauthorize revolving funds for fiscal 2019 pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as amended for the following purposes? The amounts are in here in these revolving funds. Finance Committee recommends as presented. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article 4 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article Number 5. Will the, will the town vote to raise and appropriate, take from available funds a sum of $4,000 for the annual cost of community emergency alerting system or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting the article? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 6. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $40,000 in combination with any matching grant funding for the master plan development, including any related work, or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 6 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article Number 7. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $49,000 in combination with any matching grant funding for the expansion of the rail trail, including any related work or any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 7? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article Number 8 and Article Number 9 were withdrawn. Article 10. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of $60,000 in combination with any matching grant funding for the information technology equipment and upgrades, including any related work or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 10 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 11. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $65,000 to purchase guardrails to be installed on the inbound side of BFW Drive by the Highway Department or any other, or take any other action relative thereto? The Capital Planning Committee recommends per the capital plan. Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 11? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 12 was withdrawn. Article 13. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $9,500 to repair the roof and three exterior doors and trim for the Highway Department or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting the article? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 14. Will the town vote to appropriate or take from available funds $20,000 to fund the study and design of underground and above-ground infrastructure for the Union Street Center or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 14? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 15. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $45,000 to purchase a tree service truck four-by-four, 9900 GBW regular cab with an eight-foot body V8 for the tree department or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 15? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 16. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $49,641.38 for an eighth payment of a 10-year lease purchase for the 2011 1500-gallon-per-minute pumper with said lease completed in 2021 or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 16? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 17 was withdrawn. Article 18. Will the town vote to raise and appropriate or take from available funds a sum of $30,000 to purchase bulletproof vests and protective equipment for each member of the Fire Department or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 18? All those opposed? That's a vote. Will the town vote to rescind and delete the 2016 Amendment 4.15.89a zoning variances to Article 11 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws? I'm not going to read this whole article. I think that about says what it is, and there'll be, I'm sure there may be some discussion on this. There's, there's five items before any, it goes on, before any variance is granted, the board must find all of the following conditions to be present. This is, was adopted in the 2000, if I'm correct, 2016 Annual Town Meeting. The Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Planning Board. I call on Mr. Corbett.
Good evening. My name is Michael Corbett. I'm the vice chairman of the Planning Board. Mr. Moderator. On April 12, 2018, the Rockland Planning Board conducted a duly-norised public hearing for proposed Articles 65, 66.
No, no, Mr. Corbett, we're on Article 19. I think you want to go down to the, what you gave me. May 2, public hearing?
On May 2, 2018, the Rockland Planning Board conducted a duly-norised public hearing on the proposed Article 19, and planning board recommended not to recommend unanimously.
Okay.
Sam.
Now, I need a, I need a motion.
Motion to pass over.
Motion to pass over.
Motion, I have a motion to pass, to, motion to pass over, and I have a second.
Mr. Moderator?
I'm sure we're going to have some discussion.
Can I speak?
Sure. Come on down. Unless, Mr. Corbett, you want to speak first, since you're the chairman of the planning, uh, vice chairman of the Planning Board.
Could you repeat what, what the planning board's recommendation was? I don't think a lot of people could hear you.
To not recommend.
Not recommend approving the article?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good. Actually, I would ask the voters to approve this article because we are the taxpayers who pay all the bills here, and the only problem that happens is a use variance always wants to come into residential neighborhoods and put something that really isn't appropriate in the neighborhood. And we've all experienced this, this past year, so please approve this article to rescind use variance. We've done it before. I need a two-thirds vote. Please do it.
Sam, we put this article in, 2016, I believe it was. Nothing has come before us, and this gives a town flexibility if it goes before zoning on, on what we can do with the land. Nobody has come before.
Ms. Parsons, wait a minute. Mr. Corbett, continue if you wish.
Sam, as far, nothing has come before us, have been approved. Been appro, been approved. So it hasn't been used.
Mrs. Parsons, hold up one second. Mr. Corbett, are you finished?
Yes. Yes, I am.
All right. Mrs. Parsons, wait one minute. I'm going to call on Town Council Chris Kenny.
So Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10 allows towns to adopt these type of bylaws that do allow use variances in very limited circumstances. As Mr. Corbett stated, this, this, this bylaw was enacted by town meeting back in 2016, two years ago. Since then, not a single use variance has been granted. There's required findings both under the statute and under this bylaw, and if any of the findings, all the statutory findings must be met. Failure to meet even one of the findings is fatal to the variance. So basically, these type of use variances are used very sparingly. As you can see in the past two years, a use variance has not been granted by this board. It's a useful tool in very limited circumstances. It's better than, it's, it's a better option than mass zoning changes, wholesale zoning[1793.28] It's better than, it's a better option than mass zoning changes, wholesale zoning changes to zoning maps, and it should not be used for specific items in, you know, in, thank you.
All right, before, before Mrs. Parsons, because you did, I'll let you back up.
Bob Manzella, Chairman of the Zoning Board. I've been on the board since 1990. We've issued two use variances. That's it, in what, 28 years? They are very hard to come by, and it's a useful tool to help get these abandoned buildings back on the tax rolls. So that's mainly what it's used for. I think what Mrs. Parsons is referring to is a tower that wanted to go on the residential road. That's why they asked for use variance, because it's on the courts. Doesn't mean they even needed it. Yeah, towers are exempt, basically, by federal law.
Bob, can you come over to this other microphone? We still can't hear you, Bob. It's the microphone, it's not you. Mrs. Parsons, will you let them?
If it's a gap in coverage, they are allowed to go in any zone possible. It doesn't matter if we have the use variance or whatever, they go to the FCC and they get approved. Use variance has nothing to do with what Mrs. Parsons is talking about. Thank you.
Mrs. Parsons?
We used to have use variance, and we did get rid of use variance. Then it came back for a vote in 2016, so I do know that we can get rid of use variance.
I didn't say you can't get rid of it. I said there hasn't been a use variance granted since 2016.
Right.
Since, since it was reenacted in 2016, there has not been a use variance granted.
Right, but the thing is, is if someone wants to change zoning, they can change zoning. They don't necessarily need to use variance, as use variance. And we did get rid of use variance, and we have changed zoning from time to time. So that's all I'm asking everyone to do, is to rescind that use variance.
Is that it, Mrs. Parsons?
Yeah, I would think so. I didn't mention a tower.
Mr. Kimball?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Kimball, Magnolia Drive, currently Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I actually chaired the Zoning Review Committee when this went back in. We made some zoning changes and some amendments to our zoning. This was a tool that was, we came back to the body, you folks, two years ago, to implement this change so that we could have that available, so we could take, possibly have the potential for any abandoned buildings in town to maybe convert them that may not be, we'll say, in the current zone that would apply to them currently. For example, we talked earlier tonight about the Estes property. That's one particular property that may be able to be utilized for use variance. There's another property off of North Ave, the former Cumberland Farms, of some of you people who might be close to my age. It's been a vacant property across from Body Shop there. There's been many, many people intent to try to put something in there, but nothing has been able to get in there yet, so it's another vacant building. There's H.H. Arnold off of Liberty Street, that's another potential site that could be of use to possibly use variance in the future. All this is a tool, and you have to meet certain conditions in order to have it implemented. This is just a tool to be utilized in the future. As Mr. Manzella, who's been on the Zoning, GBA Board for the past 28 years, he said there was two prior instances, and that was going back prior to 2016. Since we've implemented this in 2016, there's been no applicants and no use granted. We're simply asking you to keep it the way it is so that we can potentially have the ability to convert a property, as Mr. Manzella said, make it so that it's conforming to the neighborhood as opposed to something that might be decrepit, decaying, and abandoned. And so for the neighborhoods, I mean, it would be a tool that could be utilized to bring a property back, okay? And that's all it's for. Now, when Mrs. Parsons had spoke earlier, I believe I heard somebody in the back say something about a cell tower. Mr. Manzella is correct. The Board of Selectmen actually worked with the people from T-Mobile to try to get them to look at a different site. We were very successful in having them withdraw their application. You're going to see before you tonight, there's some other articles coming up where we can actually expand or implement some cell tower usage on town properties, okay? So the use variance was not utilized for T-Mobile. It wasn't utilized for a cell tower. And Mr. Manzella is correct in the fact that if anyone does their homework, if they can actually show that there is a gap, the FCC will overrule that. The town could vote it down, we would go to court, and more than likely, we would lose in a court battle, and we would have to fund that. Again, it wasn't about the cell tower. And I know that there's some discussion out there about an ice skating rink behind Forest Street. I have family, I have friends in that area as well. Again, the use variance is not in place for that. In fact, a variance out there for that particular item to go out to Jellahan Parkway is actually going to be more, better, beneficial to the neighborhood than actually having them come out onto Forest Street. So what has to happen is, people need to go to these meetings and actually get your facts straight, because Mary has part of the facts, but unfortunately, she doesn't have all the facts. Thank you. I ask you that we, we pass over this article as written. Thank you.
Tom Henderson, 102 Arlington Street. I was the former Planning Board Chairman when this article came to fruition and came in front of you and was voted in 2016. To expand on Ed's comments, we worked with a variety of stakeholders throughout this town: zoning, conservation, planning, town accountant, Selectmen's Office, business community, and we looked at what was the best thing for the entire town. We didn't just take a small section and say, how can we benefit one or another? We looked at the entire town, and we wanted to make sure we put tools in place that could utilize this. And we knew how strict putting a tool like this in place would be and how hard it is to get. There's a lot of hurdles that have to be overcome in order to be successful at this. So I ask you that you follow the Planning Board's recommendation and pass this over. Thank you.
Mr. Valenzola?
Jared Valenzola, 112 Webster Street, Clerk of the Planning Board. I'm not going to reiterate what everyone else has just said. I ask you rescind this article. It's important to note that anybody applying for any type of variance still has to go before zoning board, conservation, open space, planning board, whatever the lines and machinations they have to go through. And as, as Mr. Kimball stated, those meetings are published, they're posted, they're open for folks to come. I think we saw a great community upswell against the cell tower that, that helped drive it away. That's where those stuff gets meted out. But to do wholesale zoning changes, that happens once a year here. And to completely handicap or handcuff, as Mr. Henderson said, the stakeholders that are involved with these lots, just doesn't seem practical. So again, I urge you to pass over this article.
Motion to move the question. Do I have a second? All those in favor of moving the question signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number nineteen, all those in favor of passing this article over signify with a show of hands. All those, I'm sorry, I need a two-thirds, so I'm going to try for unanimous. I probably won't get it, but. All those in favor of voting to pass the article over signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's unanimous. Article twenty, will the town vote to transfer $52,500 from the overlay surplus to the assessors' revaluation account for the purposes of completing the fiscal year 2019 revaluation as mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from overlay surplus. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-one, and I'm going to have an amendment on this. Mr. Allen?
Bill Allen, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I'd like to recommend that we amend this article to read, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $35,000 for the purposes of funding for the regular noontime lunch program or take any action relative thereto?
Do I have a second? All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-one as amended signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-two, will the town vote to authorize the Sewer Commissioners to take from the Sewer Department unreserved fund balance account the sum of $100,000 to be expanded by the, expended by the Sewer Commission as part of the town's ongoing program to identify and remove sources of inflow and infiltration as required under the terms of the NPDES permit issued to the town by the United States EPA and the Massachusetts DEP or take any other action relative thereto? Purposes mandated by EPA Administrative Order to give an ongoing inflow and infiltration program. Capital Planning Committee recommends, per the Capital Plan, Finance Committee recommends funding from the Sewer Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-two? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number twenty-three, will the town vote to authorize the Sewer Commissioners to take from the Sewer Department unreserved fund balance a sum of $50,000 to be expended by the Sewer Commission as part of its pump replacement program at the wastewater treatment plant or take any other action relative thereto? Many of the pumps are original equipment from 1964 and are non-reparable. Capital Plan Committee recommends, per the Capital Plan, the Finance Committee recommends funding from the Sewer Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-three signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-four, will the town vote to authorize the Sewer Commissioners to take from the Sewer Department unreserved fund balance account the sum of $40,000 to be expended by the Sewer Commission for a consultant whose duties will include operational and financial analytic analysis for the Sewer Department as well as the preparation and implementation of the RFP Request for Proposal for the Long-Term Operation of the Sewer Plan or take any other action relative thereto? The current long-term 15-year contract with SUEZ Environmental Services expires June 30th, 2019. The Massachusetts State Procurement Laws mandate that this expiring contract must be rebid. Finance Committee recommends funding from the Sewer Fund Balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-four? All those opposed? That's a vote. Twenty-five, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $84,000 to purchase and equip two police cruisers or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-six was withdrawn. Article twenty-seven, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $13,666 to pay the second of a three-year lease payment for the police K-9 cruiser or take any other action relative thereto? The reason the K-9 vehicle needed to be replaced mid-year in fiscal year 2018. Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-seven? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-eight, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to transfer from available funds the sum of $36,000 to pay for the installation of basketball court that would include the hoops, poles, and fencing to be located at Hartson Park or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article twenty-eight? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article twenty-nine was withdrawn. Article thirty, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $5,000 to purchase tables, chairs, and sensory tables for the classrooms or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Youth Commission? Finance Committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-one and Article thirty-two were withdrawn. Article thirty-three, will the town vote to raise it appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $30,000 to replace the vinyl covering on the interior stairs of the Rockland Community Center or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-three? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-four, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to transfer from available funds the sum of $12,000 to replace two sets of doors located in the gymnasium of the Rockland Community Center or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-four signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-five, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $25,000 for repairs at the McKinley Community Center Building or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-five? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-six, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $61,000 for a new 2018 dump truck with plow or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends passing the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article thirty-six signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-seven, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $22,000 for new field painting machine or take any other action relative thereto for the Park Department? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of Article thirty-seven? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-eight, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $11,000 to replace the block building at Bicentennial Park with a new wooden shed or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends passing the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article number thirty-eight signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article thirty-nine, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $20,000 to replace the footbridge at Hartson Park or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article thirty-nine? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number forty, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $5,000 for tree replacement or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends passing the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article forty signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article forty-one, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $15,000 for replacement of fence at the softball field or take any other action relative thereto? The Finance Committee recommends passing the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article number forty-one signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? I'm sorry, Mr. Allen, was this changed at the meeting of April 30th? Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, it's printed wrong.
It was actually printed wrong, so our recommendation, Finance Committee's recommendation, was to pass this article over, and unfortunately, went into print with the wrong printing.
This was voted on, at the Finance Committee meeting I attended on April 30th, Monday, April 30th, 2018. Am I correct, or was verified?
It was, it was.
It was verified.
Did we vote it on the 30th, or was it the, the 23rd? It was, it was, I think it was voted on the 20.
Okay. So this was a misprint?
It was a misprint.
Okay. Let's just do it one more time. Article forty-one, the Finance Committee recommends passing the article over. This was a misprint. All those in favor of passing over the article signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article forty-two, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $100,000 to fund the replacement and upgrading of computers and any technology-related expenses or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the School Department? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article forty-two signify with a show of hands. All those in, opposed? That's a vote. Article forty-three, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $65,700 to fund the fourth year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for two 2015 Ford Transit Special Education vans and the third year of a five-year combined lease purchase for four 2016 Ford Transit Special Education vans and the second year of a five-year combined lease purchase agreement for one 2017 Ford Transit wheelchair-accessible special education van and one 2017 Ford Transit Special Education van or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article forty-four, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $30,592 to fund the purchase and installation of a walk-in combination cooler-freezer for the cafeteria kitchen at the Eston School or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article forty-four? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article forty-five, will the town vote to raise it appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $7,705 to fund the third year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a 2016-15 passenger multifunction school activity bus or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. Finance committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 45? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 46, will the town vote to raise an appropriate to take from available funds $11,026 to fund the second year of a five-year lease purchase agreement for a 2017 F-350 dump plow truck for the school department or take any other action relative thereto? Finance committee recommends funding from the undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 46 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 47 was withdrawn by the school department, but it's got to be read because it went to print and it was voted, the finance committee voted to pass over this article. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $200,000 to fund the repaving of the Esten School driveway and parking lots or take any other action relative thereto? As I said, the school department wanted to withdraw it, but when they did, it was already printed. First action is to come is to pass the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article 47? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 48 is the same. I must read it. Will the town vote to raise an appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $42,000 to fund the purchase of a new marked police vehicle with the Town of Rockland specifications for the Rockland Public School Security Resource Officer or take any other action relative thereto? The school department withdrew this article, but it was too late, so the finance committee voted to pass the article over. All those in favor of passing over Article 48 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 49, will the town vote to raise an appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $20,000 to fund the purchase of a ride-on floor scrubber machine for the high school or take any other action relative thereto? Finance committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 49 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 50, will the town vote to raise an appropriate to take from available funds the sum of $16,000 to fund the purchase of night lockdown devices for classroom doors throughout the district, including Rockland Daycare and McKinley School as security for an active shooter attack or take any other action relative thereto? Finance committee recommends funding from undesignated fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 50? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 51, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of making the initial payment on a five-year lease purchase agreement on a backhoe front-end loader or take any other action relative thereto to replace their 1999 backhoe? Finance committee recommends funding from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 51 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 52, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $40,000 for the purpose of continuing Phase Two of replacing and installing water main gate valves throughout the distribution system or take any other action relative thereto? Water, finance committee recommends funding from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 52 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 53, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from water undesignated balance the sum of $50,000 for the purchasing of water meters or take any other action relative thereto? Finance committee recommends funding from the water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting the article? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 54, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $35,000 for the purchase, for the purpose of purchasing a heavy-duty pickup truck or take any other action relative thereto to replace a 2006 F-250? Finance committee recommends funding from the water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 54 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 55, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of continuing the survey and testing in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations governing crossconnections to our water system 310 CMR 22.22 or take any other action relative thereto? Under the Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulations, we are required to perform these surveys and tests annually. The finance committee recommends funding from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 55? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 56, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $30,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of heating ventilation upgrades to the Hannigan Water Treatment Plan in Rockland or take any other action relative thereto? The rooftop heating units have aged and need replacement. The finance committee recommends funding from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 56? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 57, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $100,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of redeveloping the affluent discharge at the Great Sandy Bottom and Hannigan Water Treatment Plants or take any other action relative thereto? Changes will reduce our sludge production. Capital planning committee recommends, per the capital plan, finance committee recommends from funding from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 57 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 58, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $130,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of replacing the filter media and rebuilding the filters at the Hannigan Plant Great Sandy Bottom and Myers Avenue Water Treatment Plants or take any other action relative thereto? The media has aged and the filters need an overhaul. This will complete the filter upgrades at all the treatment plants. Capital planning committee recommends, per the capital plan, and the finance committee recommends funding from water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 58 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 59, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water undesigned, undesignated balance the sum of $25,000 for the purpose of purchasing water hydrants or take any other action relative thereto? The reason, annual replacement program is to bring the system up to date for the safety of the residents. Finance committee recommends funding from the water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 59 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 60, will the town vote to authorize the water commissioners to take from the water fund balance the sum of $85,000 with a like amount from the Town of Abington for the purpose of replacing the finished water pump at the Hannigan Water Treatment Plant and chemical feed pumps of both the Great Sandy Bottom and Hannigan Water Treatment Plants or take any other action relative thereto? Pumps are in need of replacement. Capital planning committee recommends, per the capital plan, finance committee recommends funding from the water fund balance. All those in favor of adopting Article 60 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article number 61. It's kind of a long one. And I know you don't want me to read this, but I will read the beginning. Will the town vote to enter into the agreement with the South Shore Regional School District or take any other action relative thereto? This regional agreement is entered into pursuant to Chapter 71 of the General Laws of Massachusetts as amended by and among the towns of Abington, Cohasset, Hanover, Hanson, Norwell, Rockland, Sitewatt, and Whitman hereafter, sometimes known as the member towns. The district shall be called the South Shore Regional Vocational School District hereafter, sometimes known as the district. The finance committee recommendation was defer back to the Board of Selectmen.
Superintendent Hickey is here.
Superintendent Hickey, would you like to speak? Superintendent Hickey is the superintendent of the South Shore Vocational High School. And I've given him permission to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you at a town meeting. This evening, we have a series of amendments to our 1960 regional agreement. Rockland, one of the original six towns that formed South Shore Voc Tech. We haven't amended this agreement since the mid-1980s when Whitman and Hanson joined the district. We received a state grant to revise this agreement. This agreement attempts to update and modernize the language. No substantial changes in how we do business.
I should have had, what I should have had in the beginning was a motion. I need a motion on this article. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. Is there any other discussion or any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, we will vote on Article 61 as printed in the six or eight pages we have. All those in favor of adopting Article 61 as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? You voted to adopt that. Article 62, I need a two-thirds vote on this. Will the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell land of low value or take any other action relative thereto? There is an addendum B at the back of your booklet, and the finance committee is deferring to the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Chalka.
I'll try and make this quick. When there was a realignment of Wayman Street north of the East West Parkway, there was one small section, I think it represents about 5,000 square feet. It's a small triangle of land that is of no value to the town. However, it is of value to the business owners in the area. We'd have to get it appraised. This is not a high-value, as we say in the article, low-value property, but the town really doesn't need it. And it would be of value to the developer, the owner of the business, to try and take that for more frontage and to expand his business, which means more taxes and revenue to the town. So it's a very small triangular piece of land that's left over from the realignment of Wayman Street years ago. Thank you.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I need a motion. Do I have, do I have a motion to adopt or pass over? I have a motion to adopt. Do I have a second? And I have somebody that wants to speak. Mr. Anderson, I think.
Yeah.
My George Anderson, 355 Forest Street. I'm looking at this. It doesn't specify one piece. Can this be used for anything in town?
No.
I don't know exactly.
George, can you come over to the microphone?
Mr. Moderator, if I could. The question was, is there any, you, George, is there any use that the town could use for this? And it's really not. It's just a small triangular piece of land, and unless somebody wants to put a bench up and watch cars go up and down Wayman Street, at best, it's really of no value to the town at this point.
I can understand that, Alan. I understand that, but the way it's written, it's just, Board of Selectmen will sell land of low value. It doesn't specify one specific piece.
It does. The addendum is at the back--
All right, I don't have it. I'm sorry. It's just that one particular piece?
Yes.
Okay. As long as it's just that, it's just the way that's written, I do not, I don't know. That's kind of weird to me, but--
Right. This is not any other land. This is one particular piece of land. Thank you, George.
Any other questions or discussion? If there's, is none, I'd like to try and get a unanimous. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of adopting Article 62 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? Article 63, and this is going to require, this is going to be amended. This is another long article that I know you don't want your moderator to read. This is to do with the town will vote to amend Part II general legislation of the zoning Rockland general, in its general code zoning, and it is not a zoning bylaw. So there's going to be an amendment. I'm going to recognize Mr. Kimball because we found out legal-wise from town council it was going to be in the general code, general bylaws are not in the zoning bylaws. Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Kimball, Magnolia Drive, currently chairman of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. Regarding Article 63, I want to amend the first sentence of Article 63. Treaties follows. Will the town vote to amend Part II general legislation of the Rockland general bylaws by adding a new section entitled Stormwater Management as follows? Reason, after the warrant was printed, town council advised us that this bylaw should have been listed as a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw. It was inadvertently listed as a zoning bylaw, but it really operates independent of zoning. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
I ask everybody to adopt the article as amended. Thank you.
Do I have a second on the amendment? And at the end of it, it said, finance committee referred to the planning board, but it ended up being the reason they thought it was a zoning bylaw, so it actually was deferred to the Board of Selectmen. So how it's, I'm sorry. So the article is amended. The first sentence is going to say, will the town vote to amend Part II general legislation of the Rockland general bylaws by adding a new section entitled Stormwater Management as follows? And then we have 14 pages, 15 pages. Does anybody have any questions or is there any discussions?
Mary Parsons, Union Street. I would ask you to pass this over because it's really not planning board issues. It's more EPA and DEP, and they already have current laws for stormwater. And as the planning board knows, in terms of their engineer, developers come with best management practices in terms of putting stormwater in because there's all laws already, and if, at the very least, amended to put it under the Conservation Commission because it's not planning board issues. There's more CONCOM issues than anything else. Thank you.
This is all.
Good evening. Deirdre Hall, 204 Stan Pipe Drive, and a member of the Board of Selectmen. This particular bylaw is required under our EPA NFT's MS4, small MS4, permit for stormwater discharge. It's been required since 2006. Although we've been enforcing it, we actually don't have it on the books, and that's a violation of our permit. The permit requires us to have a bylaw. This particular bylaw is split up into two sections. The first section is more purpose and scope. The second section specifically deals with what is and what is not allowed to be discharged into our drain system for the protection of our waterways. And the final part of the bylaw deals with permitting when it comes to projects that are more than an acre. EPA requires us to have special stormwater permitting for those projects that disturb more than an acre of land because sediment is the worst pollutant to our waterways, and they want to look out for that. Right now, under our current permit, as it's been extended, I think, eight or nine years, the requirements for stormwater management line up with our state requirements, but as of July 1, that will no longer be the case. EPA is going to now put more stringent requirements on stormwater discharges, including construction and with what goes into our drainage system, than what currently MASTA EP requires. So in order for us to be compliant with our permit, which is, we're going to be issued a new permit, it should have come out last year, it got put off another year, but in order for us to be compliant and not potentially open ourselves up to liability, we need to make sure that we adopt this bylaw, and I ask for you to adopt the bylaw as amended. Thank you.
Mrs. Parsons.
I have amendment to place it under the Conservation Commission.
Do I have a second? Go ahead.
Please delete the title, planning board, replace with Conservation Commission.
What page is that on?
And you've already amended to take out zoning, mainly because everything under this, the, the MS4 is under the sewer department, and the sewer department has a contractor that takes care of the actual daily sewer department things. But this really should be under CONCOM because most of the issues, and since I deal with EPA and DEP on a regular basis, we also have administrative consent order for what, do we still have corporate issues there? No, we don't. Okay. But we were under administrative consent order. North River, South River Watershed had a lawsuit against us, so no, it really comes under CONCOM and not planning board because planning board is not equipped to handle it. And the CONCOM has actual consultants and enforcement people that could handle it better than planning board.
Mary, whereabouts did this, did you--
Well, zoning's in there because it was in the-- Well, zoning's in there because it was in the thing, but I asked to delete Planning Board and replace it with Conservation Commission.
So you could, you could say that it's within the scope.
Okay, now, you're going to get this out of there too?
No, it's only enforcement. That's okay.
Okay, so we're just going to...
So there's a number of references to it, right?
Yeah.
At that point, you're only talking 100.
Mr. Moderator, the amendment doesn't actually state precisely where the actual amendments should take place, and Planning Board has referred to a number of different places throughout the 15 pages of this article. And the amendment is also to replace the zoning enforcement agent or the zoning enforcement officer with the conservation agent. So there are literally dozens of potential amendments. I'm going to suggest the amendment is within the scope of the article. We'd have to go through and do a substantial amount of wordsmithing if the amendment does pass, but I think we understand what the amendment is. Just for clarification, cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth have adopted this very same type of article. It's been put under zoning boards, it's been put under planning boards, it's been put under Conservation Commission, so it's been done a variety of ways. There's no, it is not illegal or improper to put it under the zoning board as, or the planning board as, has been written here.
I'm not saying that it's illegal. I'm just saying it's better suited for CONCOM.
Tom Henderson, 102 Arlington Street. From the days of being on the Planning Board, which was not too long ago, the Planning Board used a consulting engineer. They continue to use a consulting engineer, which is a civil engineer, and they consult with the Conservation Civil Engineer, Nova Armstrong, on any stormwater or anything related to wetlands on a project. So the facts about, Ms. Parsons, about the not having consulting engineer is not true.
I didn't say that you didn't have consulting engineer. And I do know that Nova Armstrong has a civil engineer as well as environmental engineer. That's why I say it's better suited there.
Just to clarify, though, the Planning Board uses a civil engineer, and they consult with the Conservation Commission on all projects that we do with, that, anything that deals with stormwater.
Okay, does any, we have any other, any other questions? Okay, first, first question is going... I'm sorry. You've got to be a little louder.
Again, Deirdre Hall, 204 Stanpipe Drive, member of the Board of Selectmen. I just wanted to clarify that the work that occurs under this particular permit is shared not only by the CONCOM when it's in a wetland, not only by the Planning Board as it's written, and not only by the zoning enforcement officer for those violations, but also there are measures in it that the Highway Department deals with when we do catch basin cleanings and street sweepings. There are issues that the Sewer Department deals with when we have sanitary sewers that are leaking into our drains. So it is a, really, an all-hands-on-deck effort through the town. And I want to say, I first approached CONCOM as the person for this, and they don't want to do it. And it's got to be done. And Planning Board was kind enough to take it on as an additional role. And I know that they have the ability to do it because that third part of the permit only deals with projects that are greater than an acre, and those types of projects would probably be coming before the Planning Board anyways for site plan review. So it will also be an efficiency, it'll be an efficiency within the system because as Planning Boards are reviewing those projects, like for new subdivisions or large municipal projects, as they're looking at those for either special permitting or site plan review, we'll be able to levy additional stormwater review at the same time. So there's an efficiency built in there as well. So again, I just ask you to pass this as the original amendment as a general bylaw. Thank you.
Motion, move the question in second. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed, that's a vote. The first action is going to become on the amendment by Mrs. Parsons to delete the title Planning Board and replace it with the Conservation Commission, and zoning enforcement officers shall be replaced with Conservation Commission agent or acting agent. And what else she wrote? No, this is not the Planning Board domain. She wrote, Massachusetts, the DEP and the Environmental Protection have hotline phone numbers that anyone can call to report improper illegal activity concerning stormwater discharge, et cetera. All those in favor of adopting this amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you've opposed the amendment. I have a motion as amended to adopt...
No amendment, unamended.
We amended the beginning.
The initial amendment.
Article number 63, and this is a majority vote, it's not a two-thirds. All those in favor of adopting Article 63 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 64 was withdrawn. Article 65. Will the town vote to amend Article 2, Section 415-2 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws entitled definitions by adding the following new definition in the appropriate alphabetical order to the existing bylaw definitions? Marijuana establishment. A marijuana establishment shall include all types of marijuana establishments as defined in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 94G, exclusive of facilities that are licensed for medically prescribed purposes to include marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses, or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee referred this to the, deferred this to the Planning Board. Mr. Corbett.
On April 12, 2018, the Rockland Planning Board conducted a duly notice public hearing on proposed Articles 65, 66, 67, 69, 70, 71, and 72. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning Board voted favorably to recommend Articles 65, 66, 67, 69, 70, 71, and 72. On Article 65, we recommended the article four to one.
The article with what?
For Article 65, we've recommended four to one.
Okay. I need a, I need a motion so we can discuss it.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? I have a second. Mr. Corbett, is there anything else you'd like to add?
We recommend passing the article.
Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Article 65 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Now, I'm not, Mr. Corbett, all you've got to do is state what, each one, Article 66, you don't have to read the whole thing again after I... Will the town vote to amend Article 4, Section 415-19 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws entitled H1 Industrial Park Hotel District by adding a new paragraph D, uses requiring special permits from the Planning Board as follows? D, uses requiring special permit. One marijuana establishment pursuant to Section 415-38.5 or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Corbett.
The Rockland Planning Board recommended Article 66, three to two.
Motion to approve in a second. Do I have any discussion? Mr. Manzella. Okay.
Do you have another copy?
Yes. Probably you read it. I like to amend Article 66. I move this article be amended to replace the words Planning Board with zoning Board of Appeals in proposed Section 415-19.G.
I have a, is that, is the motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? I'd like to have a second before we discuss it.
Second.
I have a second. Have your discussion.
The reason why, this is a zoning article, is, comes under Chapter 48. It's not an overlay district. Right now, there's 197 uses in this town that require a special permit. And this is the only use that the Planning Board will be working on. And the Planning Board, like previously said, they do site design, street layouts, and subdivisions. They act under the subdivision control law. We act under Chapter 48, the zoning act. Planning Board, right now, medical marijuana is under the zoning, zoning board. So the first option for the state would be to go to a medical marijuana facility. So if a medical marijuana facility wanted to do recreational, they would have to come to us first and then go for the same hearing and go to the Planning Board for another hearing. This creates unnecessary process.
Any other discussion? Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Kimball, 8 Magnolia Drive, currently Chairman of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. Myself as being Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, which Mr. Manzella actually sits on as well, and members of the Planning Board, members of Conservation, members of the town, town accountant, okay? We've taken up this bylaw before we went through, and our committee had voted to advance it so it would go into planning. As you heard tonight, planning voted three to two to support it as well. Currently, what happens with medical marijuana, Mr. Manzella is correct. Medical marijuana facilities go through the zoning process in order to be cited. As we get further into marijuana, what we've decided to do, currently, medical marijuana is in the H1 district. We're asking you tonight that when we get into the retail portion, to mirror that same H1 district because everything is already in place. There's 107 pages, if you go online, from the state. The state has a large control in how marijuana is sold, there's all sorts of conditions. We thought that anybody who was going to go through that process certainly didn't need to go back through zoning again if it's in an area that would fit. Okay? And that's why we chose to go through with the planning. I'm not a personal user of marijuana. I don't know how many of you are in the audience. It's nothing more than a widget or a donut, or a cup of coffee, or going to buy gas for me or someone else. It's just a new business. So we thought that it would be better served just going through planning, not zoning. And as Mr. Manzella had mentioned, the medical marijuana facilities currently go through zoning, but under the state regulations, they would be the first ones that could actually convert, could potentially convert to recreational use. Therefore, they would have already gone through the process of zoning to be actually cited initially. So again, that's why we went through with recommending to go to planning. I ask you all to vote it to go through as it's written tonight. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. First article, first action will come on the amendment introduced by Mr. Manzella to replace the words Planning Board with zoning Board of Appeals. All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify... I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Lauren White, I live on Beale Street. I did not come prepared to speak on the topic. I didn't know that this was coming up. I wish I had a little bit more research in hand. I do a little bit of commercial real estate. My personal opinion from, you know, a revenue, a tax standpoint is this would be a good thing for business owners and bringing tax revenue in. But from a resident person that lives in the town, I don't have kids, but I want to. And I'm not sure that I want people being able to just walk around and smoke pot on our streets because we are... I think that it will open it up a little bit more for that to be a little bit more acceptable, and I think that that is more likely to happen. If you do some research and you look at Colorado and some of those other places that first adapted this, the amount of money that these companies are making in the industrial warehouses is absolutely incredible. But from a residential standpoint, you should also do a little bit of research, see what's happening in the towns and the communities and how it's really impacting the people that live there. You know, I'm not saying maybe don't adopt it. You guys can do, obviously, whatever you think's right for the town. I personally like the idea of keeping a little bit more of, I don't know, I like the idea of having to go through zoning and planning and putting a little bit more steps in place to protect, protect us while we see how this impacts our town, and we can always open it up and get rid of that later on. That's all I have to say.
First article will be on Mr. Manzella's amendment to replace the words Planning Board with zoning Board of Appeals. All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted not to amend the article. All those in favor of adopting Article 66 as printed in the warrant signify with a show, and I'd like to, I'd like to get a unanimous because I need two-thirds. All those in favor signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 67. Will the town vote to amend Article 5 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws entitled Building Lot and General District Regulations by adding the following new section 415-38.5 Marijuana Establishment as follows? There are multiple, a number of pages. The Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Planning Board. Mr. Kimball.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Kimball, 8 Magnolia Drive, Chairman of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. I'd like to propose an amendment to Article 67. I, Edward Kimball, move to amend Article 67 of the annual town meeting warrant as follows. That proposed Sections 418-38.5.D.D. be amended to insert a new section 418-38.5.D.D. lowercase d marijuana cultivator. The explanation is the purposes of the bylaws to allow any currently lawful marijuana establishment to locate in a selected area for such business. Thank you. And I ask that you adopt the article as amended.
First, we've got to vote. We're going to adopt the article and then adopt the amendment, or whatever, pass over the, I need a motion on the article.
Motion for a change.
Do I have a second?
Right. Mr. Moderator. Right. I'd like to speak on this one.
Yeah, just one second. Come on down. And I need a motion to, on the amendment. Do I have a motion for the amendment? Second.
Second.
Okay. Hold on one second. I'm going to recognize the Planning Board Chairman, Vice Chairman first.
Rockland Planning Board voted four to one on Article 67 before the amendments.
What was the vote on that? I'm sorry, Mike.
That was four to one.
Four to one. Okay.
Two pass.
Does a gentleman like to speak? Come over to this microphone, sir.
Yeah, my name is John Wasner, a 34-year resident of Turner Road. And I just want people to understand, some of these facilities, as well as the retail facilities, in the hotel zone, they abut residential areas. There's nothing in this bylaw that speaks to residential areas. And what I'd like to do is make an amendment to a section here. And what it is, why I'm bringing this up, there's a section here that relates to 300 feet from property boundaries for public schools, colleges, playgrounds, library. They don't exist near the hotel zones, but residential do. So I'm not sure why we can't... So I'm not sure why we can't include 300 feet here for our town residents so we can all coexist. And if you look at Quincy, Quincy has a 1,500-foot zone, buffer zone between retail marijuana places and residential. So I think it's a reasonable ask to make that amendment to this, to this Article Number 67.
Do you have an amendment, sir?
I do, in fact. And I can hand it to you here.
Yep.
And it's 415-38... dot five, C, three. And I'm just adding in as to one of these areas, it would be residential neighborhoods as well. If I can show you that here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is Page 56 in your warrant. And under C, General Requirements in Three, the gentleman wants to amend it to include residential neighborhoods.
Never mind.
We all set, aren't we? Yeah. Great. All right, let me just cover that one more time. On the Page 56, General Requirement C, Number Three, he wants to add in, in the third line, after the word playground, he wants to add residential neighborhood. So this would read, "No marijuana establishment should be located within 300 feet of a property boundary line of any lot in use as a private or public school, college, licensed daycare facility, library, park, playground." And then he wants residential neighborhoods, recreational or athletic fields or facility or similar place where children typically congregate. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
Oh, there you are. I have a motion and a second to amend Article 67 as I've just read. Is there any other discussion? Lady here in front.
Stephanie Buckley, 652 Liberty Street. I'd just like to say, these rules are very strict. Having a marijuana establishment near a residential facility doesn't pose any risk. It actually keeps it away from the children's hands. It puts laws in place so that people have to be IDed. There's no restrictions for package stores. There's no restrictions for bars. They're in residential A-bars. Every town on the South Shore, minus Quincy, and I think one other town, has banned it. This is a huge opportunity for Rockland to create a bunch of tax income, and it's really actually safer to be here in our town than on the black market, which it has been. So it's this, making these restrictive rules for businesses is, it's just silly, in my opinion, and I just wanted to say that.
Any other discussion? We will... Gentlemen, come on down. Oh, you're welcome.
Steve O'Donnell, 71 Winding Way. You know, as we talk about this, and I agree, it's a wonderful opportunity for the town of Rockland. The rest of the South Shore has really sat on this. They waiting to see what other people are going to do. But if you look at the research, and now, in my class, I believe, five kids that I graduated with have died from opioid abuse. There are studies that show that marijuana use can combat that and can ease treatment. It also shows that there's less alcohol use. Now, I don't see any zoning laws that prevent a liquor store or a bar in a residential neighborhood. I don't understand why we would put a 300-foot restriction in an industrial zone for this, for something that's less risky. Zero ODs, zero deaths attributed to marijuana. I want you to think about that before you vote on this amendment, to really pigeonhole the potential properties that can be used. Just think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Valenzola.
Jared Valenzola, 112 Webster Street. I think it's important to note, we're not talking about the merits and demerits of recreational marijuana. That was decided in 2016 ballot. This town voted overwhelmingly to support recreational mari... Well, pretty strongly to support recreational marijuana. What we're now doing is creating regulations to make sure that, like every other business in liquor stores and bars and others, are under the same sort of restrictions. Actually, less onerous, I'll give you that. The H1 district, to orient yourself though, I believe is around the Reservoir Park Drive area where Ledgewood Place is. Off the top of my head, I don't have the zoning map in front of me. I'm not sure how many residences are within 300 feet of the H1 zone. I could be wrong, but, you know, we need to create regulations so that way we can properly manage this, this new business coming to town. As Ed Kimball said, this is just any other, any other business at this point, and we need to make sure that we do this right, and that way we create the proper rules and regulations to not be onerous. Hey, look at that. We've got a zoning map right here. That's, this is Dej's illustration.
Mr. Kimball.
Actually, what I, what I want to talk about is this map that we had done in the H1 district, okay? It's color-coded to represent what designates delineation based on whether it was 500 feet, 400 feet, 300 feet, 200 feet, 100 feet. Now, unbeknownst to many of you in this audience, there's actually some schools that actually exist in the H1 districts. So we're very cognizant of the fact of, we didn't want to affect businesses that are already there, but we also didn't want to deter businesses from actually opening. Just because it's marijuana doesn't mean it's not a business. So you've got some facilities, whether that would be a gymnasium, whether that would be a chair gym, whether that would be a swim school. Those are schools or like properties that if you read through the bylaw, that we're recognizing, okay? Now, as Mr. Valenzola had mentioned, the town overwhelmingly supported by majority that we would have recreational marijuana. The Board of Selectmen took the steps to go through, which is a much harder thing to do than some of our neighboring communities, to implement something that would not only protect the rights of the people who voted in the majority, but still protect the rights of the people who are in the minority, okay? I've got children as well. They're grown. I've got a grandchild that's overdue, so maybe I'll get a call tonight. But the point of the thing is marijuana is legal. Whether we use it or don't use it is irrelevant. We need to recognize that it's legal. It's a legal business. Whether you drink or smoke or if you gamble, those things are still legal too. But to say that you don't do it and don't approve of it, that's okay for you to have a personal choice. But we, as a community, have to make sure that all of us get the same say and the same choice. That's why we're here tonight. We're here to vote on this to establish something, okay? Whether we agree to use it or want to try it or not use it, that's our personal choice. But we're going to allow the people out there who want to make the personal choice to either purchase it or use it safely and legally, to give them the ability to do that. And that's what we're proposing tonight. We're setting up and establishing rules and, excuse me, rules and regulations so that we can monitor this. Now, all of you have probably read about the state. The state actually called back the fact that edibles and restaurants and if you had a massage parlor or if you had a yoga studio, those rules and regulations aren't even out yet. And we're not even going to even look at revisiting any of that stuff till we actually get those rules and regs out from the state because they don't know how it's going to work yet. And then I'm sure if things don't work, we'll be back here again at town meeting, either making amendments to what we're doing tonight or further increase in zoning to allow for future businesses, once we know what the state wants to do, okay? Now, as far as the residential neighborhood, there's very few residential neighborhoods that abut the H1 area. And we've opted to go through with the H1 area because, as I mentioned earlier, any facility that's currently operating now would be a medical marijuana facility that's already gone through the zoning portion, and their bylaw is much more stringent than the 300 feet we're proposing tonight, okay? So any of those facilities that would be operating would be well within the 300 feet. What we didn't want to do was have a particular landowner or building owner end up having a monopoly by going through and having this bylaw, excuse me, having this bylaw being too vast as far as having more than what the state was looking for. If you, I've actually gone to a couple marijuana seminars, and actually, what they, what they suggest is 100 feet. We actually took the time and care to go through and come up with a medium, and we come up with 300 feet. And the purpose of that was so that we would have something that we could go through and actually vet, and we did go through that. And again, everybody up here is a volunteer. I ask you folks to come out to these meetings. We can get a lot more information when you go. You can take a lot more input, and we need the help. We honestly need the help because it's not what one particular board wants. We're a town, and we have to act as a town. And that's not just one night a year. That's all year. And I ask you to support this as amended without going into the residential area as my original amendment, okay? And give us the faith, give us the faith in these boards that we're doing the right thing for you folks. Thank you.
Gentlemen that propose the amendment.
So it's not important to me whether you use or don't use marijuana. I'm looking for consistency. You chose to put 300 feet from schools and parks and et cetera. Why not residential, as everyone else in the state who has passed these laws has done? And I know you talked medical marijuana facilities, but you didn't talk retail. And the way this would stand now, retail goes 50 feet from the residential border, period. Not your 300 or anything else like that. So that's all I'm suggesting. Quincy did 1,500 feet. You've done 300 for the other things. Why not some of the people who live in the town?
Yeah, please. Some people on our board actually wanted to make sure we opened it up throughout the entire town, okay? That would be downtown, that would be your road, Turner Road. I got your letter, by the way. Thank you. It would be my neighborhood. It would be wherever. We chose to go in the H1 district because it was already proven, and that's why we already allowed it previously, okay? So we didn't just say, wow, let's do it here, let's do it there. We actually made a definitive decision to go through and do it in the district that's already established for medical use, okay? That's why we did it. Now, as far as saying, in the future, I don't know if you're, if you're in the restaurant business. I don't know if you're in wellness business, but those businesses already exist in town in Rockland. And when the rules change, the laws change, I'm sure there'll be people here, if not me, there'll be others on the board, and there'll be other people in the audience, whether it's a citizen petition or not, that they're going to want to bring this stuff forward. Things change. I've been in town for 50-plus years. I've seen a lot of change, okay? Sometimes change is good, sometimes change is bad. But the biggest thing we can have is fair. And fair is not what this is about. It's legal in the state of Massachusetts, okay? It's going to benefit the town because we're going to have revenue that's going to come in to help support some of the programs we're talking about tonight. If you notice tonight, there were some articles that were passed over, and I want to recognize the school for their cooperation and allowing those items to be withdrawn. Because that's another thing that a lot of people don't realize. We have a great work and establishment with our schools, our other committees in town, so we can advance the town. We're trying to do what's right for the town. We're trying to recognize that you people made a choice at the ballot box. I do not use marijuana personally, but you people elected me. Now it's my turn to do what I'm supposed to do for you, and that's to make sure that we can actually put marijuana, make it available to the people who voted for it, and still protect the rights of the people who didn't. And that's simply what we're doing here tonight. And I think it would be, I do not believe it would be prudent on our part to, to go back and be stringent about the residential component because honestly, I don't know what's going to happen to a restaurant downtown in the future. I don't know what's going to happen to possibly, whether there's going to be a retail facility downtown. We don't have the answers for that. That's what we're asking you folks to help us with. And that's going to be at another day and another time. Tonight, it's about the H1 district, okay?
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Second. Do I have a second? I have a motion to move the question in a second. All those in favor? All those opposed, voted to move the question. First action is going to be the amendment submitted by Mr. Kimball that would add a new section, 4D, on Page 57, Marijuana Cultivator. All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. The second amendment, submitted by this gentleman over here at 139 Turner Road, on Page 56, under General Requirements, he wants to add residential neighborhood, where it stated twice, to be included in the 300 feet of property boundary. All those in favor of adopting the amendment signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, the chair is in doubt. My counters come forward. We'll try one more time. All those in favor of adopting the amendment, adding residential neighborhood, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted to accept the amendment. I need seven people to stand up. Okay. Will my tellers come forward? All the people voting in favor of adopting the amendment, adding residential neighborhoods, signify with a show of hands, and keep them up until the tellers count you. Section 1, Nancy?
14.
14. Section 2, Mary?
36.
36. Section 3, Liza?
23.
How am I, I'm sorry?
23.
All those opposed to the amendment signify with a show of hands and keep them raised. Section 1, Nancy?
24.
24. Liza?
12.
12. I have a total of 73 in favor, 60 opposed. You have voted to adopt the amendment. We're now going to vote, we're going to vote on Article 67 as amended. I'd like a, I'd like a unanimous, but we're going to need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of adopting Article 67 as amended signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 68, another marijuana article. Will the town vote, will the town vote to adopt a provision of Mass. General Law 64 and Section 3 or any enabling authority to impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana establishment operating within the town of Rockland to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at the rate of 3% of the total sales price? 3% of the total sales price received by the marijuana establishment as a consideration for the sale of marijuana or marijuana products or at any higher rate is authorized by law. The explanation this article will authorize the town to impose a sales tax upon the sale of marijuana or marijuana products should any marijuana retailer obtain permits and approvals to operate in the town of Rockland. This is a majority vote.
Correct.
We don't need the planning board on this article. I need a motion because it was deferred to the planning board, I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second? Motion to accept in a second. All those in favor, this is a majority vote, take, to vote Article 68 in favors signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you have voted Article 68. Article 69, will the town vote to amend Article 2, Section 413-415-2 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws entitled definitions by adding the following new definition in the appropriate alphabetical order to the existing bylaw definitions? Accessory apartment, an independent living unit containing a kitchen, bathroom, living area, and independent means of agress built into or attached to an existing single-family dwelling referred to herein as the principal dwelling or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Planning Board, Mr. Corbett.
Planning Board recommended unanimously to pass this.
Did you say unanimous, Mike? I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting Article 69 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. Article 70, will the town vote to amend Article 5, 430, Section 415-32 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws entitled accessory apartment within a single-family dwelling as follows? There are two, a page and a half. The Finance Committee recommended referring, deferring to the Planning Board, Mr. Corbett.
Planning Board recommends passing.
Adopting the article?
Yes.
Well, before that, what was the vote?
Unanimously.
And I had a motion to accept it, do I hear a second? Motion in a second to adopt Article 70. Any discussion? Lady over here. If you'd come down to the microphone. Thank you very much.
Hi, Donna Golden, 552 Webster Street. I think this article is a tremendous violation of our personal and private rights as citizens with our own private property. I really don't feel that you have to have somebody patrolling your own personal business in your own private home. That's all I'd like to say.
Do I have any other discussion? Deidra?
Deidra Hall, 204 Stanpipe Drive, Rockland Board of Selectmen. Just in response to that comment, this bylaw actually is loosening what we currently have, so we actually, what we have in place for accessory structures is more restrictive than what this is. So, I understand your concern and we're trying to loosen that. So, hopefully, so you guys are aware, we, that's the goal here, to, to be less restrictive.
Any other discussion? Do you have another question? Sure, come on down.
Donna Golden, 552 Webster Street. In the former language, it did not have the stipulation that the building inspector had the right to come onto your property on a yearly basis and/or get a, it was a, recommended that they could, but it wasn't stated that they could.
In all the special permits that were issued, it was a condition that they must. So, the way the bylaw is written previously is it has to be by special permit only, and the special permit conditions, which are then recorded at the Registry of Deeds, was, that was a mandatory provision of the special permit. So, although it wasn't, may not have been in the bylaw, that was attached to the land and it went with the land so long as you continued to use it as an accessory structure. And I believe our building inspector has just kind of looked back into records and had gone back into people who had accessory structures who had not been doing that in order to, to make sure that they were doing that. So, it, it, there is no change there.
Any other discussion? First action will come on adopting the article. All those in favor of adopting Article 70 as printed signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, you voted to adopt Article 70. Article 71, will the town vote to amend?
That need moderator? It has to be two-thirds?
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a two-thirds vote. I'm falling asleep here at the switch. One more time. Article number 70, all those in favor of adopting Article 70 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 71, will the town vote to amend Article 4 of the Rockland General Code zoning bylaws entitled permitted uses by amending Section 415-8, 415-9, 415-10, and 415-11 as follows? 1, amend 415-9 entitled R2 Residential Zoning District subsection 10 by adding a new accessory use, accessory apartment subject to the provisions of Section 415-32M. 2, amend Article, amend Section 415-10 entitled R3 Residential Zoning District subsection B by adding a new accessory use. 3, accessory apartment subject to the provisions of Section 415-32M. And 3, amend Section 415-11 entitled R4 Residential Zoning District subsection B by adding a new accessory use. 3, accessory apartment subject to the provision of Section 415-32M or take any other action relative thereto. Finance Committee deferred to the Planning Board, Mr. Corbett.
Planning Board recommended unanimously to pass.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor of adopting Article 71, and I need two-thirds, are unanimous. All those in favor of adopting Article 71 signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's unanimous. Article 72, will the town vote to amend the town of Rockland zoning map as shown on a plan on file with the town clerk by including Howard Street Lot 40-050 as shown on a map on file with the town clerk into the downtown Rockland revitalization overlay district or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Planning Board, Mr. Corbett.
Planning Board recommended unanimously to pass.
I have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor of adopting Article 72 as printed, and I'd like two-thirds are unanimous. All those opposed, you have unanimous vote. Article 73 and Article 74 were withdrawn. Article 75, and there's an addendum C at the back of the warrant, will the town vote to accept the gift of land map 25, parcel 16, 17, and 18 or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Chaka.
Uh, this is just three what in the old days you would call woodlots that are in the back of, I can hardly read the writing, but it's off of Hingham Street. What is that drive?
Behind Cobb Drive.
Cobb Drive. It's, it's back in the woods and at this point, the, the property owner has no use of land. A, a good portion of it is wet and he's just willing to donate it to the town. No back taxes, it do.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Motion.
A motion in a second to adopt Article 75. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 76, will the town vote to amend Article 18 of the 1999 Annual Town Meeting by reducing the membership of the Open Space Committee from nine members to a maximum of seven members or take any other action relative thereto? Finance Committee recommends deferring to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Kimball?
Ed Kimball, 8 Magnolia Drive, Chairman of the Rockland Board of Selectmen. As you've heard me say multiple times tonight, we need more volunteers in town to serve on the committees. Open Space has done a lot of good work in town and unfortunately, they don't have enough members, which then puts them in jeopardy of having a quorum, which then again puts them in jeopardy for the members that do show up at the meetings to go through and conduct, conduct the business they need to conduct. So, we're asking you to support this article and adopt it. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Motion.
Motion in a second to adopt Article 76. All those in favor? All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 77, will the town vote to adopt the bylaw? No land disturbance shall occur within 25-foot buffer adjacent to the delineated wetland or take any other action relative thereto? One second. One second, ma'am, I'm gonna ask town council.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Unfortunately, this article has written with no reference back to the rest of the town's general bylaws and specifically the town's wetland bylaws. It would be really difficult, if not impossible, to enforce. So, based on the fact that it's, it's not specific and it doesn't reference or fall within the framework of existing bylaws, I'd recommend that town meeting pass this over.
Is it out of order or is it?
It is legal amendment, but it'd be really difficult to enforce given the way it's written.
I have a motion to pass over, do I have a second? Where's the lady that wanted to speak?
I just wanted to speak for a minute. We don't have a law in place.
Just state, please, state your name and address.
Yeah, sorry, I'm nervous about this.
That's okay.
Trish Pierce, 41 Norman Street. We do not have a law in place and conservation had at one point tried to get a law in, in place. And what I'm asking is, I wrote it down because of course I get nervous at this stuff. Article 77 is seeking to change conservation law. It's asking the town to adopt the bylaw, no land disturbance shall occur within 20 feet, 25 feet buffer adjacent to the delineated wat, wetland or take any other action relative thereto. I'm asking for the town to align with the state and federal conservation guidelines. The state refers back to the town's conservation laws and right now, we don't have any. I've had the opportunity to sit at the Conservation Committee and believe they should have some law in place. Many residents do not want housing built on or around conservations because of the impact it will have on our neighborhoods. Having a law in place can protect us from this.
I don't dispute the wisdom or the value of what the petitioner is saying at all. The, the problem is we're using terms, legal terms without reference or definition. So, I don't, I don't know that a wetlands bylaw has been proposed to this town meeting. I don't recall it being proposed at all. But without reference to either state statute or a local bylaw, it becomes really difficult to enforce something like this. Again, conceptually, you're absolutely correct, a lot of communities have this, and I think this Conservation Commission may even apply that standard, but if we're gonna set up bylaw, I think we need definitions that either reference back to, to the existing framework of a local bylaw or state law.
If I could speak for a minute, um, state law, and we have talked to conservation with state law, state law has referred back to the town. And they've asked for the town to have their own laws. So, because there is no law in place, we're caught in catch 22.
Mr. Traynorfellow? Who I believe is still on the Conservation Commission. No?
No. I was gonna say Eddie Lincoln Road, but I'm out of there now, so it's 102 Garden Terrace. We haven't got a 25-bound, we, we, when I was in the, I was in the conservation for, I think, 17 years. In 17 years, we've been hounding that we wanted to get some kind of a law. We wanted at least 25 feet so you couldn't build beyond, before that. There's a lot of property out there that's wet. And people are filling it in and going from there, but we, we, we're forced to take, a lot of people we say, we're 25 feet away from wetlands. There's property there, Rockland Glen is one, that is, they couldn't put backhoes in there because it was going in the wetlands. They kept it very close and the two, three, four builders that were in there had to keep it within the bounds of the wetlands. They got, they put the houses up and they got 10 feet in the back of their house before they hit wetlands. 10 feet, nothing. They haven't got any land at all, and that's why you have to have a boundary, you have to have 25 feet at least. We tried to get 25 feet years ago and the, the Finance Committee Chairman apparently didn't like us, so we couldn't get anywhere.
Wow, that was a long time ago.
I say it was a long time ago, but I mean, it's, we tried to get 25 feet. We, plenty of times I'd go to a, a house and I'd say, you gotta move your house back 10 feet because you're close to the wetlands. I mean, it's just a joke really, but it's, you have to have a 25-foot. There's a lot of, a lot of towns that go 50 feet and we're only asking for 25 feet from, from the wetlands. If you don't give this, if you don't think that the 25 feet is good enough, then let me build my house on your property and see how you like it. It's terrible. You go to Millbrook, there's another one. The back of the house, there's only nine feet. They got no land at all. The front of the house, they got like a nice big lawn, but not the back. The back, they wanted to put a, a 12-foot porch on, they could only go with 10-foot. 10-foot is really nothing, but it's all wetlands back there, everywhere.
Andy, I think you made your point.
I made the point.
And we'd love to hear from you.
In other words, he's telling me to go home, so I, I will say one thing, Kevin, you really earned your money today.
And we'd love to have you here. All right, the first, one more?
This is last.
Okay.
I know you said, again, Trish Pierce, 41 Norman Street. I know you said we do not have the proper wording. I'm requesting counsel. Can the town come up with the proper wording for the 25-foot setback?
That, that isn't gonna happen tonight. That would have to be researched at a, and come back next year at a town meeting. First action, the first action. No, I, this guy was, gentleman was here, I'll let him speak, but we're gonna be brief. Just your name and address, please.
Mike Ronberg, 373 Forest Street. Mr. Moderator, through you to our legal counsel, could we amend this article to, to state, will the town vote to adopt a zoning bylaw?
I, I don't believe so.
Zoning bylaw has to go through the.
That would have to go before, go ahead, Chris, I'm sorry.
Sorry, a zoning bylaw would have to have a planning board hearing, so we wouldn't be able to hear that tonight.
Would have to have a public hearing like the other ones. I have a motion to move the question?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? That's a vote. With, the first action is gonna come, we had a motion to pass the article over. All those in favor of passing Article, Article 77 over signify with a show of hands. All those opposed? That's a vote. Article 78, will the town vote to amend Rockland General Code zoning bylaws Section 415-20 by striking? Section 415-20, by striking the Wireless Communications Services District? Shall include all land located in the I2, I3, I4 zoning districts and by substituting therefore, the Wireless Communications Services District shall include all land located in the I2, I3, I4 and H1 zoning districts? And amend the Rockland General Code zoning bylaw, Section 415.20C, by adding thereto 16, number 16, telecommunications towers or take any other action relative thereto? The committee, Finance Committee defer to the planning board?
For Article 7?
Article 78.
Article 78. The planning board voted favorably to recommend the first proposal of the amendment to Section 415-B2 as printed in the town meeting warrant and to not recommend the Second Amendment concerning 415-20C.
So the issue that came up with this particular article was, this was a citizen's petition article. When it went on the warrant, it was actually, there were some typographical errors. This because it went to the zoning board. The zoning board, I'm sorry, the planning board, the planning board for their hearing. They did have a proper hearing on this. The problem was, they, they had the hearing with the typographical errors and there was a section missing I1. So they basically, the information they heard is what they, what they had the planning board hearing on and they did do the recommendation to do, to allow the first part, H1, and not recommend the second part. So basically, there could be, someone would need to do an amendment, to follow the planning board recommendations, someone would have to do an amendment to basically strike the second half of this article, the second part.
I apologize for some of the confusion, but this article, there was a couple of small portions that were omitted and it went to the planning board. The petitioners did not go to the public hearing and/or point out that, and you know, it happened at town hall, so we'll take the blame. That it, it did not, it did not get printed in the warrant right. It was never pointed out until late this afternoon. The public hearing that was published and that went before the planning board, the petitioners did not go to the public hearing or point this out. So at this point, we've got a little bit of confusion. Not intentional and I apologize, but.
Motion to pass over. Do I have a second? All those in favor of passing over Article number 78, signify with a show of hands. All those opposed, that's a vote. And that concludes. And I'd like to thank everybody who came and stayed tonight. I appreciate that. Town got a lot of business done for all the hard-working people, for the Finance Committee. I appreciate it very much. Have a good night.